Please, and Jeffrey, would you mind taking the role, please?
Sure. Trustee Craven?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Morgan?
Here.
President Pro Tim Little?
Here.
President Kilby?
Here.
Ms. Craven, would you mind leading us today?
Certainly. Please rise, place your hand over your heart, and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a big flag salute.
Amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Mr. President.
Public comments on the library? Saying no one make a mad dash. We'll get down to consent calendar.
Move the approval of consent calendar?
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on consent calendar? If not, please vote. That passes unanimously. Ah, we're down to comments from the staff.
No comments from staff, Your Honor.
Any comments from the trustees tonight?
I have a comment.
Yes, Mr. Little?
Yeah, as you may know, I'm, my wife and I are involved with the print of the library and bookstore. And they were invited to attend a kind of farewell luncheon for Barbara last Wednesday, I believe it was. So I tagged along, and we, it was very nice, and, but I took the opportunity on behalf of the council to thank her for all of her services and pointed out that she, she took a library that was good to something that was great, and we thanked her for it. So just to let you know that I made those comments to her on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
Anything else from any of the other trustees? Okay, with that, we will adjourn to June 22nd.
Call this meeting of the Camrio Sanitary District Board of Directors to order and ask the record to reflect that all board members are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Public comments. I don't have any card, cards. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak to us on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move to the consent calendar.
Move the approval consent calendar?
I'll second the consent calendar.
Motion is second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Comments from staff?
No comments.
Comments from board members? Meeting's adjourned.
Can we have this one going just as fast?
Oh, I'm sorry. My brain's going somewhere else tonight. It's drifting. What do I do with my, oops, excuse me. There it is. Okay. Let the record, let the record reflect that all members are present. We have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have added a special meeting for this evening for a closed session to be added to the agenda.
You need to announce kind of what that recall covers?
You need to open it, maybe.
Actually, that was posted, and it's for your 7:30 hour.
Okay. Okay, no presentations this evening. Consent calendar?
Move the approval.
We have a motion for approval. Second? Any seconds?
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote. That motion passes five to zero. We'll move down to city manager. Ventura County Transportation Commission, Ventura County Local Transportation Authority, Transportation Tax Measure Investment Expenditure Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April 22nd, the VCTC Board unanimously approved the attached investment expenditure plan for its proposed half-cent sales tax for transportation purposes. The 30-year tax is expected to generate $3.3 billion over its life, of which Camrio would receive an estimated $3 million each year for street maintenance purposes beginning September or October of 2017, 16, 17? 17, yes. Thank you. Hey, sooner's better than later, Darren. We'll take what we can get.
You're acting like me now, Dave. Come on.
The tax would be effective April 1st of 2017. As seen on page two of the agenda item, 50% of the tax proceeds would be returned to the county and the, and the 10 cities for local streets and road maintenance purposes. As you can see on page two, there is a breakdown there. 50% for local streets and roads, 20% for a match, for federal funding for the freeway program, and then going on down the list for 3.3 billion over the life of the tax. In order to place the tax on the ballot, the law requires that at least six cities representing no less than 50% plus one of the incorporated population plus the Board of Supervisors approve the investment expenditure plan before VCTC can request that the measure be placed on this ballot, on this coming November ballot. Tonight's suggested action is to adopt a resolution approving the tax measures proposed investment expenditure plan. And that concludes staff's report.
Questions? Questions?
Yes, Jen.
How did, or what was the allocation, or the formula for the allocation between the cities?
Oh, that was based on, Darren, why don't you help me out here? Memory's getting a little...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Darren Kettle. I'm the executive director of the Ventura County Transportation Commission. Thanks for considering this item this evening. The ultimate decision, Councilmember McDonald, was based on lane miles for each community. So the way that the formula works is it's based on the number of lane miles in each local jurisdiction. It was the closest we could get to having a connection to the local road street system so that you'd have equity or equality in that, in the funding source.
Darren, if I recall correctly, I think maybe one of the finer points is that the county's portion was based on road miles because of the nature of their, their roads, because they're non-urban. Road miles seem to be a better indicator of the, of the true cost of maintaining county roads. Also understanding that those county roads provide important connectors between the cities and especially from Camrio to other cities. They're important travel routes, not only for the commuter but for emergency services. And so the county ends up with a slightly larger percentage of that money coming back, but then for the 10 cities, it's distributed per lane miles.
And if I, if I could, just to further the point, what the commission did was we worked with the city managers and the county executive officer to determine the best way to distribute the local 50% share. So the commission sort of stepped back on how that was going to happen and sort of let the city managers of Ventura County and the county CEO come up with the formula that they thought best represented the way to approach it.
May I follow up on that because I'm confused? So didn't everyone end up with lane miles then?
No. The cities ended up with lane miles. The county ended up with road miles.
Road, I gotcha.
I have a question. When we're looking at this state Board of Equalization fee of 30, 49 million, why are we sending it back State Board of Equalization?
The State Board of Equalization actually in the, in the legislation that allows us to, allows the commission or any transportation agency to put a measure on the ballot, the Board of Equalization is the administrator of sales tax dollars in the state of California, and they get to charge an administrative fee. And so this is the administrative fee for them to collect the funding and then send it back to us. The number, we have taken a conservative number based on our involvement, working with the other transportation commissions in Southern California about what the ratio is. It's anywhere from 1 to 1.5% of, on an annual basis of what those, of the sales tax dollars that are generated.
So we could be less than 1.5?
It could be less. We wanted to make sure we were conservative in that number, yeah.
Right. Now, in looking what would come back from the federal government, because I had this question asked, and I, I know, I think I know what it is, but somebody else may need to know, when do we get matching funds for what type of projects from the federal government?
Well, certainly, the way that the commission has structured this program is to match the federal and state, the federal and state highway money. So in the, in the sales tax measure itself, in the investment plan, there's $660 million back to the freeway program. The total revenue we expect over 30 years is about double that, it would add another 100% or to double that to about 1.2 because that's the state and federal funds, our gas taxes that we pay today, in some cases our own, just general fund taxes. So on the highway side, we would take the 660 million in round numbers, and that would match state and federal funds almost on a 50/50 basis. So that's one area where we would get the federal funds back. The other is, as just an example, is in the most recent federal law, there's funding that is set aside for freight movement that requires a 50% match from a local agency. So we have a federal freight movement program that is now funded, but the only way we can access those dollars is if we have a local contribution to, to a project. So that's the way we're able to do it. And it's, both of those programs are the two primary areas where we match federal or state funds.
Now, also, with the money we're getting, we're going to get from this increase, does this include what they give us already?
I don't understand your question, Mr.
Well, we have, we have taxes we get from the state of California.
Yes, yes. So that's, so in round numbers, so we are looking at 3.3 billion over 30 years for that very broad program. We see, expect to see in federal transit funds, state transit funds, highway money, as much as 7.5 million when you take the 3.3 plus about another 4 billion of those other sources. So the 3.3 local measure money then goes and leverages $4 billion of federal or state funds for a broad transportation system funding package.
So we're going to gain substantially. Okay. Other questions? Comments? Yes, Kevin?
Yeah, Darren, to pass this, it takes 2/3. And is that about 66%? Is that what?
66.7 we have to get to. That is our magic number. And our voter research that we've done most recently at the end of March of this year, our voter research puts us right at 67% on what we call the cold question. And then with push questions, we get as, we get up to 69% of Ventura County's likely voters in November of this year.
And then do you have a marketing plan in place, or will we be implementing one?
The commission has had an extensive community outreach program for the last three or four months, and that's going to continue up until about the time we ask that the Board of Supervisors, assuming we get all the requisite cities and population, of course. Once the commission asks the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors takes action to place it on the ballot, we will continue an education program, but there has already been a campaign that's been established that will take on the private sector side, and we'll step back and, you know, as, as you're all aware, we can't advocate, we can educate and inform. And so we would, we will do that to the extent we can do that legally, and then, of course, the campaign will be doing the advocacy side.
And they'll have a budget that they'll set?
Correct. Yes. A substantial budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Bill?
Well, you know, the whole thing is, evolves around the fact that we've got mounting highway needs and a pretty stagnant, if not declining, pot of money. And I'd like for you to maybe talk a little bit about the, how this has occurred because of the state, federal tax hasn't been changed, gas technology has affected the gas.
Yes, several matters, and thank you, Commissioner Little, my Commissioner Little. The, there are a couple of different factors. The, the fact is, is that the state and federal gas taxes, states, the state gas tax and the federal gas tax has not been increased since the early 90s. It's a flat tax. It has not, you know, oftentimes we think of taxes being percentage-based, and so it sort of rises with inflation. In the case of the gas tax, it's based on a pure gallonage, gallonage tax. So we haven't seen an increase in, in the gas tax since the early 90s. So that's one issue that has kept numbers, the, not seeing this sort of adjustment for inflation. But we've also seen most recently that, in many cases, the revenues that are going to your own local street and road fund and your, your city manager and your political works director and finance folks can, can speak to this. Our local jurisdictions are seeing a reduction in the revenues they get from that because there's a component of the gas tax that is based on the, the sales price of gas. And because while as a consumer, it's great to not spend as much money at the pump, it's affecting all of our street and road budgets countywide. We're seeing that, that there's a reduction in what's coming into you from the Highway Users Trust account, which is the gas tax that pays for your local street and road improvement. So those two factors specifically, and then thirdly, as we, as we see a greater penetration of alternative fuel vehicles, zero emission vehicles, plug-in, you know, the, between Priuses and Volts and those types of things, those aren't paying any gas taxes because they're very limited gas taxes because their, their mileage is so, is so good as far as the nature of how far they're able to go on a gallon of gas. So a car that gets 50 miles to the gallon, they're, they're not paying the same as what, you know, cars in the, in 1992 that were doing 25, you know, might have been 10, 15 miles to the gallon. So we have a couple of different factors that have really brought down the ability to, that revenues coming in to support a transportation system, you know, here at the local level, nationally, and at the state level.
Thank you. Other questions?
A couple of follow-ups. On the federal matching funds, those aren't an absolute, they're just if they're available, then we have the funds in order to match. They're not for sure.
There are, yes to both, actually. So there are some that are, there are some that come to VCTC by formula, and, but we're able to leverage that to get more out of those dollars if we were to have a sales tax measure to, to fund, as an example, the 101 freeway project. It gets built that much sooner because we have our local revenue stream. That's one issue. But there are also programs that are competitive that if you don't come in with a match, you're not going to compete for those federal or state grants. And then thirdly, the freight movement program I mentioned earlier, that actually is, it's new in, in federal law, that it's very specific that you have to have a 50%. It's a combination in federal and state law. You have to have a 50% to access the freight movement money. So we could very well find ourselves in a situation where we have $8 million with the Ventura County Transportation Commission's name on it for freight movement projects, and we can't access it without that local revenue stream.
And the other question I have has to do with your surveys. Was this done before all the other cities and all these other agencies putting measures on the ballot?
It was done about the same time as many of those announcements were being discussed. The question, we did have in one of our questions, is there a concern about, would, would your vote potentially change if you knew another jurisdiction was putting a measure on the ballot? It doesn't move the needle that much as it relates to voters. Now, that's happening in the instance of, of the instant of that call. I think at some point, there is an ability to absorb a tax increase regardless, and I think voters ultimately will make the decision, you know, what is my priority as a countywide measure? That this measure would be, it is at the top of the local ballot, and then as you get into lower, at the, the local jurisdictions are lower on the ballot when you get down to city by city. So, you know, we will, shall, we shall see should we be so fortunate to be on the ballot.
You can't put that little Chad back in.
Any other questions? Any emotion, or, thank you very much for coming here.
Thank you. My pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Comments?
I'll make a comment. I, obviously, we need it. Personally, I would have liked to have seen that we left more with the freeway because for Camrio, that to me is, is a bigger factor, having just driven that. Oh, I did have a question before you leave on the 101 freeway. What are they doing on the off-ramps?
I was, Councilmember McDonald, I was driving down here today and went past it and wondered the same exact thing. So I will find out, and I will, I will let you know because I was curious about it, too. It's got to be a Caltrans project of some sort. I'm thinking it may be a safety barrier, a guardrail, something along those two interchanges that, where that work was being done.
Del Norte?
Del Norte, Central, and Las Poses.
Yes, at both locations. So I think there may be some guardrail work that may be being done here. That would, based on what my experience is, I think that's what it would be. I will say in response, though, Councilmember McDonald, is that the 101 and the 118 are critical for the commission, as you know in your role and you served on it, that those projects are going to get done. That is, that is something that, because of the federal and state funds, we're able, we're able to take some of the difficult issues of federal and state regulation on a project that's already going to have to do it so that local agencies don't have to deal with that. It's just a different way of sort of using the funding in a, I'll call it a more efficient way.
Does that mean we're getting New Bridge, Del Norte, and Central?
Well, if, if we approve the 101, it's going to be something that's going to be necessary to make.
Have to happen, yes.
Can't drive through the bridge.
That's what I've been telling people. I hope you're right. I hope you're carrying through with that.
Well, my, my statement turned into a question, but sorry. You know, I can support putting on the ballot. I think this is something that the people of the county of Ventura need to decide, and we need to put it forth and let them make the decision, so.
You making that motion?
I'm not making a motion. I was making a comment.
Yes, I agree with Mrs. McDonald. I, I think we really need it. Our current freeway is very jammed. It hasn't gotten as far as poor infrastructure yet to where it was when it was widened before. But I, I think the people recognize that for both local projects and for the freeway, we need to pass this, and I'm hoping they will pass it. But that's just me personally. I think we need to put it on the ballot and let them decide.
Other comments? Bill?
Your Honor, I've, I've sat through these VCTC hearings and meetings, and there's been a lot of public comment on it. I think I could sum it up, that people understand the issue. They realize the things that, as Mr. Kettle indicated, that are changing. The fact that the gas, gasoline consumption was the hallmark of the tax system for transportation in this country for 100 years doesn't mean it's going to last forever, and it's obviously in the process of changing. So I can support this.
Kevin?
As, and I've said this before, I don't mean to be a broken record, but as a collector of sales tax, I'm very sensitive about that. Those of us that have collected sales tax for the state know what a pain in the neck it is if you're one day late, the big penalty that they charge you, with absolutely no benefit for me at all in my business to collect it. So they have a pretty sweet deal for the retailers and other businesses out there that collect this tax. But keeping in mind that I rarely had lost a sale by the rate of a sales tax for some reason, where at, I believe, 7.5. I think this will go up to what, 8%, I believe, which is still less than a lot of the other, you know, jurisdictions in the, in the state here. So I don't know any other way that we can improve our, our transportation system without us. I mean, I just look at this as our only opportunity. This is it. And I know that 2/3 is going to be a challenge, but I think if all of us work hard, I just mean, you know, the voting public here, and Darren, if we really sell this, and really, just like the, the presentation that you gave here tonight, I know you can't promote it, but maybe there's other ways to do that, and really talk about the needs, because I know a lot of us have gotten out in the cities and realized how many cars are on the freeway. It is unbelievable. And we really need this, and it'll help to a certain extent. It's not going to be the end-all, obviously, but this will be an opportunity for us to at least try to keep up with what's happening here in the, you know, in previous years and in the future. So I can, I could support this, and I just encourage everybody to really try to, try to sell this and the benefits of this, and, and we've had a lot of discussions with this. So I can definitely support this, and I don't, it doesn't come easy because I know all of us up here with the tax rates of California in general, but I do think that there's a lot more benefitses than negatives.
You know, there's three things, I've been watching and studying this because I went out and sat down and watched it for a while. I've driven back going route you take just to see where it picks up and where, looking at the other side, see where it lets up. One of the things that really got us was when Rose, Rose was closed, when Rose Avenue was closed, then did the whole interchange, people started taking Las Poses Road and Pleasant Valley Road. And you'll see jams out there. And when it comes off in the afternoon, take a ride down Pleasant Valley Road going west, our 5th Street, you'll see tons of traffic because they've discovered these other ways of getting there. The other thing, too, is 118, 118 cuts over on, on Lewis Road to catch the freeway. They're voting the scales, the freeway, everything. And those on Santa Rosa Road, I saw that yesterday. I sat there just for fun. Ah, there's so much traffic coming on Santa Rosa Road. They're taking a shortcut going around the freeway.
They're all going to vote.
They cut across and they hit our freeway. If you sit there on, on Lewis and Santa Rosa Road and Las Poses, you'll see traffic going out onto the road. That's why it slows it up. And so now, we've got that going. You know, you talked about traffic going across the city. Yes, and a lot of it's not ours because they found a way of getting through easier. Thank God we stopped trucks a long time ago. But with that in mind, we need to open up those two bridges badly, Darren. I've been telling people that's part of this, and vote for it, because with that traffic going on from all those directions, it's causing that jam until you get past Las Poses. We need to get those open. So I'm for this also. Any motion? Yes?
I move to adopt a resolution approving the Ventura County Transportation Investment Expenditure Plan and directing staff to transmit the resolution to the VCTC acting as Ventura County Local Transportation Authority.
I'll second. We have a motion second. Any other comments? Please vote. That passes five to zero. Thank you, Darren. Okay, our next item, the city clerk, response to grand jury report on public access to conflict of interest codes.
Yes, so the city received the final report from the grand jury reviewing public access to conflict of interest codes. The report is somewhat brief, but it does show that the city does have a current and effective conflict of interest code, but they do recommend better access to it on the city's website. And we prepared a response on page 15 of your report, which just acknowledges that we do have the code. It is not readily accessible on the city's website. However, we don't regularly get requests from the public for the code, and it can be provided via email or a hard copy can be provided to anybody if they came to City Hall. However, their recommendation is to make it more accessible, and we have already done that. We've added a link on my webpage that you click. It takes you to the actual code itself so that they can see the code. And then we've put it on Richard's radar so that when the website is updated, we'll figure out how that fits so that it is readily accessible to the public.
Mr. Mayor? Questions?
Just, I just have a curiosity question, and that is, of all the codes we have, why did they pick one to find out about the conflict of interest code?
Yeah, they indicate that it was in response to a request they received, not specifically related to our city, but it got them curious as to how accessible they were and discovered they really aren't.
Thank you. Charlotte?
Yeah, for anybody listening, I just want to point out that most of the cities don't even have it on their website, that one city had it available with three clicks and two with five clicks, and we were one of the two with five clicks. But we were ahead of most of the government agencies, and it looks to me like they only looked at cities and not all the special districts out there. And all of them have to have conflict of interest codes, too, so.
How about the county itself?
They talked about the county. Anyway, I just wanted to point out to anybody listening that, that we really weren't so bad. Two more clicks and you could get to it.
Okay. Comments?
Your Honor, I move that we authorize the mayor to execute the response to the final report on the public access to conflict of interest codes.
Second.
Charlotte, second, okay. Okay, please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Closed session. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to discuss that, please?
Closed sessions are conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. Number of cases is two. And a conference with real property negotiator. The authority is Government Code Section 54956.8, talking about the former fire station and the negotiators and negotiating parties, and are in the agenda and under negotiation our price and terms of payment.
Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, we do have animal control here and ready and available, and if we could move to study session because of timing tonight, that would be helpful.
Okay, so have animal control make the report this time?
No, well, they'll make it in study session. We would adjourn to study session at this time.
Okay, so they're here, ready to go.
Recession, recession.
Recession, thank you.
City Attorney, City Council. Kevin, you want to start?
Why don't we go to the study session first?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm suggesting that we, we now recess to study session.
Okay. We'll recess to study session at this time. We'll be back at 7:30.
We'll be back at 7:30. Let the record reflect that all City Council members are present. Could you please rise for the flag salute? Kevin, can you lead the flag salute?
Raise your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity, justice,
The City Manager, do we have any amendments to our agenda?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
This is time for public comments on items that are not on the agenda. I have a few cards. Is there anyone here that's not addressing something on the agenda?
Good evening, thank you. I have a request to the City Council. Some of you already know about this. I'm with the American Legion Post in Camarillo, and we're doing some research, trying to identify service members that were either killed or missing in action in the war since World War I. And I located a Camarillo citizen that never returned from Korea. He's been missing in action since 1952. Victor Galván Corona is his name. And I was, and I know some of you were at our ceremony on Memorial Day. I'd like to ask the city to, on city letterhead, or however you deem appropriate, to write a letter to the North Korean government and ask them to account for Mr. Corona and his three, the other three crewmen that went missing on that night. He still has family that lives here in Camarillo. The family is very involved in this with the American Legion, trying to get this identified. They, I mean, they have some closure now that people know about him, but I thought that a letter from the city to the government of North Korea might be a push. I mean, they're a difficult country to deal with, as we all know, if you watch the news. I have the information. I also have the, there's no North Korean embassy in the United States, but there is, I just wrote down the one from Switzerland, and I thought you could use that, or there's one in London. And I have all the information. I highlighted what I thought should be put in that letter in regards to the information. The other thing I would ask is, having a lot of difficulty trying to find information on World War I and World War II, Camarillo area residents that didn't come home, and I would like, if it's possible, in your monthly newsletter, if you could put a little note in there, if anybody has any information about service members that didn't return from the Camarillo area, if they would contact the American Legion, so that we could move forward with our project of getting them all recognized, and...
Can you leave your information with Jeffrey, so that we can look into this? Because we can't take any actions tonight, but we can look into and see what we can do.
Right, it's all right here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Give it to Jeffrey.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I was there, and you're right. Did they go into the water? I didn't figure that, when you made the speech that time, if that plane went into the water, or if it went somewhere else?
They don't know. They know they made it to their target, and on the way back, it just never returned to their base, and there was, none of the other planes saw anything, nobody heard anything, there was no mayday, nobody saw an explosion. Who knows? Maybe they had to ditch in the ocean, ran into the side of a mountain. Nobody knows, and that's what we're trying to find out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Liliana Rosas?
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Lily. I live at the Lamplighter Mobile Home Park. I've been there for six years. My concern here is that recently, I have a motor home, and I was cleaning it on May 27th around 11:00 a.m. One of the managers approached me, the male, and asked if I was going camping, which I feel was really none of his business, also because he had gone onto my property and taken an orange and said I was going to, I need, I want to have an orange. Hello? A couple minutes later, the other manager, his wife, came over with a clipboard telling me that I need to tell her when I'm going to clean out my mobile home, my motor home. I pay for that parking there. I don't really feel like I need to tell her when or when I don't clean my motor home. There was a lady next to me doing the same thing. Nothing was said to her. My other concern is I know that there's a lease being pushed, and is there like a Spanish interpreter that will explain the lease? There's a lot of non-speaking English people there that have no clue. So I just wanted to know. Also, I spoke to my bank, which lent me the money for me to buy my mobile home, and they will not support this long-term lease. They told me, "We will not support this." So, and this is a particular, I called my bank, he told me, "We will not support this long-term lease." So I'm really concerned here.
Did they tell you why? Just curious.
Get an attorney. So that's not comforting.
No.
But no, they...
The bank didn't tell you?
Well, he didn't really tell me, because he says that there's a lot of information on there that I don't understand, honestly. I've spoken to the manager there, she's tried to explain it to me. I still don't understand it. So what happens with me, who speaks English and doesn't understand it, and now there's Spanish-speaking people that have no clue? They're not here, because they feel like, "Why are we going? We don't understand." So, you know, I speak Spanish, I've kind of said, "You know, you still need to go," so you guys can see how many people are really concerned. It's a big concern. And the rents are skyrocketing there, skyrocketing. I'm a single mother, I have a child, I take care of my mother. I'm head of household there. It's very concerning.
Mr. City Attorney, I mean, City Manager, did we not get an agreement from those people that they would have someone there to explain everything in detail on these leases?
My understanding is that the Ventura Center for Dispute Resolution has, in fact, made available to the residents, an attorney who specializes in real estate law and has significant experience with leases, and I believe they've scheduled meetings and designated times, both in the day and evening hours, to be available to respond to questions, and that there's going to be a process for appointments to be made with this attorney by the residents to be able to respond to their questions and provide them with information.
If the residents called us, we could give them those dates and people...
I wouldn't suggest that we get involved in that process. I would recommend that they contact, his name is Cameron Spencer, and he's at the Ventura Center for Dispute Settlement. And they can be found, if they Google that name, I just don't have the phone number right in front of me, but it's the Ventura Center for Dispute Resolution. They're located on Mission Oaks Boulevard, immediately next door to the Camarillo Ranch in that nonprofit building there, which I believe is convenient to the Lamplighter residents, it's just north of the freeway from them.
Can you read that address again one more time? I want to make sure she gets it, because that's where you can get the legalese explained to you.
Okay, so I guess my question is for the Spanish, is there an interpreter there?
What my suggestion to you would be is that when you call the Ventura Center for Dispute Resolution, dispute settlement, and you speak with Cameron Spencer, you could ask him if they can make an interpreter available. And I assume they can, but I can't speak for them.
Okay, so there are letters going out in English, I'm assuming, with dates of when this can be explained. So there's a little gap there, that's why I'm trying to bring it up, you know? There's people there that don't understand.
Well, I would volunteer myself to contact Mr. Spencer, explain to him your concern about the Spanish-speaking residents, and see what they can do to address the communications of the availability of these services, and if there's anything they can do in terms of an interpreter.
Okay, I guess I'll forward that information, or...
Well, that information will be communicated to the residents, I believe. I'm not sure if the communications are going to come from the... Pardon me?
The information has already been delivered to every resident.
Okay, well, I'm hearing from the city clerk that the information has been delivered to the residents.
In English, correct? So, the Spanish speakers are concerned. They don't know.
Well, I don't know how to answer that. If perhaps the Spanish speakers get the letter and it's English, they could seek someone who they know that could interpret it for them. All I can do is provide you with the information that I know, which is that Cameron Spencer is the point person at the Ventura Center for Dispute Settlement, and he would be the person who, all of these, all the details, if you will, of the coordination is being handled through.
Okay, and did you have a phone number, or you did not?
Well, I'll tell you what, give me just a minute, and I'll find it by the time you're finished here.
Okay.
Time's up.
Okay, no, her time's up. So hang on a second, he'll give you something. And then you call them, there's your pros to help you.
Well, I don't necessarily need the help. I mean, maybe the understanding in English, yes, but there's other people that need the help.
You know what? Why don't we do this, rather than for me to be searching for this on my phone now? You can call the city clerk's office tomorrow, and I'll make sure they have the contact information for you. Jeffrey, what number do you want to provide her?
5315? Okay, perfect. Okay.
There you go.
Thanks.
Thanks. Next on our list is Terry Bray. Terry, there she is.
Terry Bray, Lamplighter Mobile Home Park, 63 Via Centra, Camarillo, California. Tonight I'm speaking in regards to a comment that was made in the Camarillo Acorn that came out last Friday, and anybody who wants to read that can go to theacornonline.com, click on the Camarillo Edition. It has to do with a comment that was made by the manager, Dave Norman. It says here that the city was not part to the agreement between Ms. Bray and Habitat for Humanity. Norman said Habitat was willing to repair the bathroom and obtain any permits needed to complete the work, but was not allowed to do so by Bray. Okay, here's a reality check. The three offers that were made to me by Habitat also required me to sign a full release of claims. Since the estimation of repair on my bathroom is done by a topical inspection by the California State Licensing Board, it's like a surgery. When a doctor tells you, "Well, you know, we've got a cancerous lump, we need to do surgery, but we're not sure what else is in there, so we'll have your insurance pay for that one lump, but if there's more, it's coming out of your pocket." That's exactly the setup that Habitat offered to me. So I have a copy that I've given you of one of the offers that they made. The second offer was $10,000, now it's down to $8,700. The quotation that was made by the industry expert for the licensing board is based on only the physical work, not what I would have to go through, not having a bathroom for at least three days, not for the dumpster, not for the demolition fee. This is not a remodel. This is now a demolition job, not knowing what's behind that concrete wall that has tile on it, and the floor that now needs to be taken up down to the floor joists. In regards to the affiliation of the city to my situation with Habitat, I was assigned to Habitat for Humanity by a past planner, Mr. Michael Smith. And here with the payoff of the money's to Habitat of $99,582 for 2014-2015, this paperwork was audited, examined, approved, and submitted by Michael Smith, assigned by Mr. Vaca. So, you know, I applied for the other renovation program through CHS, and now the city has deferred that until I get the bathroom fixed, until I pull the suit against the city. And how am I supposed to get the bathroom fixed? I am the victim here. I didn't create this problem. Habitat did, and the city assigned me to Habitat. I'm not a troublemaker, I am a consumer whistleblower. This needs to be fixed. I'm giving you every opportunity before it goes to court, and I guarantee you, it's going to go to court if this isn't resolved out of court. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Can I ask you a question? Terry, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Do you have any suggestions how we can resolve this?
Well, there's a variety of ways to go, and I've been trusting the city to come up with a common sense resolution, and you guys have been talking to Habitat back and forth. The reality that the city didn't know that they weren't even licensed is appalling. Mr. Vaca pulled a meeting to try and resolve this issue. I brought it up at that meeting that they weren't licensed, the person that worked on my place wasn't licensed, and the city took no proactive action in regards to that report that I gave. So I'm hesitant to make any particular suggestion, because you have a legal entity that should be looking at this and seeing what the value is of what I should be compensated for this over one year of hell that I've been going through. This is my only home, it's not a mansion, it's a 1969 12-by-38 mobile home. That's all I've got. And my place is in shambles because of the promises that were made to me by Habitat that now are no longer. The application I put in to CHS to have the renovations taken care of that now the city has deferred, so I'm being held over barrel, literally. I mean, this is insane. So I really am trying to leave it up to your expertise. If you were in my shoes, what do you feel is fair compensation for everything I've gone through, the out-of-pocket expenses, the loss at work, the medical that I'm under now because of the stress, and the stress that's being put on my family? My mom is worried sick, and she just had a stroke not too long ago, and that's the number one concern on her. So how do you put a price on that? That's what I'm saying. I can't give you...
Terry, wait, we're going to wait...
Hold on just a moment. I can't give you a definitive answer, because I'm not the expert in those areas. That's why I keep coming to you.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks for answering his question. Thank you.
I think I did.
Thank you. Okay, next one. Matt Lormer.
Matt Lormer, Lamplighter Mobile Home Park. In front of you, the City Council, just so you know, we've come here, the Mobile Home Park, the rent is $13.75 moving. It's the highest in Ventura County, and so we're forced to go to the Rent Review Board, which is not arbitrated. In front of you, you have a document, the Rent Review Board, when we met, May 12, was kind of like a kangaroo circus. Let me explain this to you for a moment. First of all, residents, we wanted a nighttime one. The residents did make it, it was at 9:00 a.m. It didn't start till 9:20, because one of the commissioners wasn't there. That was a resident commissioner that wasn't there. Therefore, we had to make an agreement to throw two park owners off and then have three residents. So they decided to give us a 5% increase. That's 5%. Let me remind you that CPI is 1.5. So they gave us a 5% increase, and they said, "Well, we're doing it because, well, the owner will take it." That's kind of ridiculous. I got a 1.7, and then the owner said, he denied that he agreed to come to this thing, and that was a joke. Also, we asked for a taped copy of this. This is a serious problem, and it wasn't recorded. Now we want you guys to record it. I want this recorded every year, because it's unacceptable. The process, again, there was no process, okay? In front of you, you know, you need to find out what happened, that Rent Review Board, because the process, whatever the owner takes is not a process. It's ridiculous. The Rent Review Commission, you know, you had the city attorney there, Don Davis, he's supposed to be impartial. supposed to be impartial. He started speaking up for a company that doesn't live in this area, and it was unacceptable. Don Davis is not here to be IPG's attorney. He's supposed to be independent. You weren't there, so you should look at the tape. The final thing I want to talk about, Vern, I'm the HOA president of Lamp lighter Mobile Home Park. Vern passed away on May 28, 2016. He served the United States Navy for 32 years. He had some issues, health, cancer. He was a great human being, he served his country. They will be having a service over at the Legion, possibly on the 21st, we'll let the city know. It's a sad thing. And I also want to make a comment to thank the veterans of D-Day, we wouldn't be here today. You know, June 6, 1944, Omaha Beach, they gave their lives to defend this country. And they defended this country because they wanted people to have the right to vote, and people should respect that vote. So, again, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Mary Scott. Mari, or M-A-R-I is what it looks like. Oh, there you are.
Good evening, honorable members of the city council and staff. Commander Monica McCrave. I'm Mari Scott, president of the Ventura County Cannabis Alliance. The VCCA is hosting a free educational event called Medical Cannabis, Separating Fact from Fiction. The event is taking place Friday, June 24, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM at the Century River Park Theater at the collection. You must RSVP to receive your ticket. Free coffee and breakfast will be provided. We welcome Camarillo's law enforcement officers, city council, and staff to attend this event in order to learn about how medical cannabis affects our community, from industry experts. One of the most clinically knowledgeable physicians in medicinal cannabis, Dr. David Bearman, will be speaking about the endocannabinoid system and how cannabinoids interact with our bodies. Dr. Bearman is a resident of Goleta and has spent 40 years working in substance and drug abuse treatment and prevention programs. Also speaking is a retired presiding superior court judge from Orange County, the honorable Jim Gray, who has been very outspoken about our failed drug policies. He has written the book Why Our Drug Laws Have Failed and What We Can Do About It: A Judicial Indictment of the War on Drugs. Finally, we have Gretchen Burns Bergman, who leads Parents for Addiction Treatment and Healing, and is a lead organizer for Moms United to End the War on Drugs. She will offer a mother's perspective of working with addiction in the family. You should have already received an email invitation, I have extra flyers if we missed anyone. Please RSVP for your free ticket using the link on the flyer. You may also find the link on our website, vcca420.org. Seating is limited. Please join us and take advantage of the Q&amp;A period at the end. Hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, is it, Mary?
Mari.
Mari, okay. Thank you very much, Mari. Next one is Rick Castaneda.
Good evening, Mayor Morgan, council members. There's been some close accidents that have been occurring on Ventura Boulevard, because there are drivers that are panicking, they don't know whether to stop or not, so they stop at the corner of Glen Drive, South Glen Drive, because they see the crosswalks, they see the little sign there. So, they stop, and there's been times where I've almost ran into the back of these cars. I've almost been hit in the back by other cars. So, another spot would be across from the Art Council, where the entrance is to the parking area, that's another little spot. I'd like to propose something like flashing lights on the street or something to let the drivers know that there is indeed somebody there, or there isn't somebody there. I think Santa Paula has something like that going in one of their streets on 10th Avenue, I believe, and I think that would be a big help to prevent any accidents from occurring if there hasn't been any already. One other thing, the freeway light for the Camarillo exit southbound is out, and at nighttime, you can't see, other people can't see if there's an exit to Camarillo, or to Carmen Drive, to Carmen Drive on the southbound. That's been like that for almost—
It's out tonight? I mean, it's out? Light on the bridge?
Yes, southbound, where In-N-Out is.
Yes.
That exit right there. It's been like, almost about a year or more that that thing has been out.
No, 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 I've been there through many times, it's not out.
Maybe it's been recently fixed, then.
You're talking stoplight or light?
The exit from the freeway, 101 freeway exit.
Traffic signal?
No.
The light that says—
The exit, the Carmen Drive exit sign.
The sign that says Car— yes.
To exit from the freeway, and then it—
The staff is looking at it, you'll go check it out.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's Caltrans, we'll have to get a hold of them for it and get it fixed.
Okay.
Thank you for telling us that.
Yeah, yeah, because, I mean, we're proud of our city, and we want everybody to know where to get off.
Your street flash—
That would help.
The idea of the flashing things on the, you know, walkways as you come across the street?
Yes.
That's also in Wauneeemee. Two or three places over by the Orvine Center and other places, they use those when people want to cross the street, they push, and those little buttons light up.
Yeah.
That could be something we can talk to staff about, just looking at and seeing what the pluses and minuses are.
Yeah, yeah, because over, especially where the entrance is to the parking lot, there's people that are waiting for the trolley there, too, and cars will see them and think they're going to stop, and so they'll stop, and the people are like waving them on, you know, and so they're not crossing, they're not—people don't know that, that are driving. So they're going to stop, thinking that those people are waiting to cross.
We can take a look at that. I can ask staff to look at that for us, because it is used in a couple of other places, yes.
Yeah, and Glen Drive is one of the most notorious spots.
I know.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I have no other comments this evening, so we'll move into our, all right, public hearing. First is resolution approving issuance of bonds by the California Public Finance Authority, CUP 357 Rancho Associates. Is that yours, Dave? Or Joe?
Yes, thank you. Jackie Lee will be presenting this item.
If I call him Dave, we've got about five Daves in this place.
Good evening, Mayor Morgan, council members. The developer for Property Company has requested that the California Public Finance Authority, CALPFA, issue tax-exempt bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $22 million to finance the construction of a 103-unit senior affordable rental housing project plus one manager's unit. The project was approved by the Planning Commission as conditional use permit 357 on May 20, 2014. And on May 17, 2016, the Planning Commission approved a modification to the site plan, floor plans, and elevations. The project is located on four acres north of the Ventura Freeway, south of Ponderosa Drive, and west of Camino Tierra Santa, within the Springville specific plan area. The project is needed to satisfy the requirement of providing 20% affordable units within the Springville specific plan area. The project will provide 51 units affordable to very low-income seniors and 52 units affordable to low-income seniors. CALPFA is a joint exercise of powers of authority that requires the city to become a member of in order for CALPFA to serve as the issuer of the bonds for the project. The debts, liabilities, and obligations of CALPFA do not constitute the debts, liabilities, or obligations of the members. The bonds to be issued by CALPFA for the project will be the sole responsibility of the developer, and the city will have no financial, legal, moral obligation, liability, or responsibility for the project or the repayment of the bonds for the financing of the project. Participation by the city in the CALPFA will not impact the city's appropriations limits and will not constitute any type of indebtedness by the city. Outside of holding this hearing, adopting the resolution approving CALPFA to issue the tax-exempt bonds, and executing the joint exercise of powers agreement of the CALPFA, no other participation or activity of the city or the city council with respect to the issuance of the bonds will be required. CALPFA has established a community benefit program in which the city will receive 10% of the CALPFA annual administrative fee collected for the term of the respective bonds. It is anticipated that the city will receive a contribution of approximately $1,000 per year that will go toward the community services grant fund. The suggested action is for a motion to adopt a resolution approving the issuance by CALPFA of tax-exempt bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $22 million for the construction of 103 affordable senior rental units and one manager's unit. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Little?
A question, I probably may be jumping ahead of it, but is there, when it comes to selection of the participant, the people who will be involved in living there, is the city going to have anything, are we going to be involved in the process of selection, and will they be Camarillo residents, and what's the criteria?
Absolutely, the city will be involved, and we will be reviewing the applications that come forward, and there is a preference that the residents are either residents of Camarillo or work in Camarillo.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Kevin?
Yeah, Jackie, the duration of these bonds, did I miss it? Is it a 30-year bond due?
They're typically 15 years.
So, that we understand, this is that project that's on Ponderosa Drive, that part that's being built right there now?
It's actually further west, closer towards the interchange.
Well, I know that. I'm sorry, it's the project that, between the freeway and Ponderosa, it's that project?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now, next question is, is the berm built up past there yet, or is it going to be finished?
The berm is not there yet.
It's going to be—
But it will be extended to the west, yes.
So that we have all the noise and stuff, like the other berm does?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because we don't have seniors having all blasting the cars going by.
And on the off-ramp.
It's, no, it's a little ways from the off-ramp, because at the off-ramp, they've got a little project built.
Ponderosa.
It's right there, though. It's still going to be noisy, trust me.
And they're not on Ponderosa, they're in—
I know that, I said between Ponderosa and the freeway. I went up on top before in Smash Hills, and was looking at a house, "Oh, so noisy, no way." But then when we put the berms up, I went back and checked that house, couldn't hear it. And so that berm is being, not only for the houses down below, but itself in the houses above. So it's keeping us in good shape. Okay, any other questions? Staff, any comments? No? Oh, I'm sorry, we just did that. No questions? Okay, is there anyone who wishes to address the city council on this item? Seeing none?
Need to open the public hearing.
It's like formal public hearing.
You need to open a public hearing.
Yeah, it is, I just did it. Well, here, we'll try it again. Anybody want to address us on this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close it?
He's standing—
Are you coming?
I'm here to address—
Okay, come up forward.
We have any questions for our project?
Just questions?
Yes.
Okay, if you want to come up here, you can, and they can ask questions of you if the council does. I got no blue slips, that's why I see nobody wanting to address us. Okay, any questions, brothers and gentlemen?
Do we have your name?
Sure, my name's Jonathan Cornelius with For Property Company. We're the developer of the 104 senior units.
Okay.
And assuming, I've got a question.
Bill?
Assuming that we approve this, what is the timetable for the project from here to construction to occupancy?
So, the next steps would be submitting construction documents to staff, and then proceeding to start construction, and right now we're targeting starting construction after the first of the year.
By that time, you'll have your board on—
In January, so it'll probably be the end, pretty close to the end of 2017?
It would, it'll probably go into early part of 2018.
Okay, all right.
Okay, other questions? Seeing none, thank you for coming up. Comments? Any comments from city council?
Your honor, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the issuance by the California Public Finance Authority of multifamily housing revenue bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $22 million for the purpose of financing or refinancing the acquisition and construction of 103 affordable senior rental units and one manager unit.
Second.
The motion is second, any other comments? Please vote. That motion passes 5-2-0. Now we're going to move to departmental items. This initiative petition, 2050, Save Open Space and Agricultural Resources. Mr. City Attorney, are you handling this one?
Yeah, this will be my item. So this is a voter initiative petition, it proposes a measure for the November 8, 2016 general election. I should mention that this item was before you, at your meeting on May 25 of 2016, and it was continued for further discussion this evening. For those of you who were here on May 25, you will see some familiar information, but since there may be some who weren't here for that presentation, I'll review it once again. This slide here is a chronology, which provides certain milestone dates of some of the events that have occurred with respect to this item. We have the original curb ordinance, which was adopted on November 3 of 1998, and it is proposed to expire on December 31 of 2020 unless it's extended. In a few minutes, I'll provide a little information about what the existing curb ordinance provides. You next see the date of April 7 of 2016 with respect to a notice of intention to circulate that was submitted to the city. I will mention that there had been a previous submission by these proponents earlier in 2016, however, there was a problem with the declaration of the circulators, because it had been dated November 31 of 2015, which was before the date of publication of the notice of intention, and as a result, there was a need to recirculate the petition, and that was done, and it was submitted on April 7 of 2016. Also, on April 7, the city provided a ballot title and summary, which I'm going to provide more detail on in a few minutes. That was prepared by me, as the city attorney. On April 10, the proponents published their notice of intention in the Ventura County Star. Publication of that notice is required under the elections code. On April 20, the proponents submitted what's called an affidavit of publication to the city clerk. May 12, the proponents submitted their signed petitions to the city clerk. The next day, city clerk submitted those petitions to the county. The reason for that is that the county would need to verify the signatures to make sure they were of registered voters. On May 17, the county advised the city clerk that there were 4,867 signatures, and that exceeded the signature requirement of 4,024 for the November election. On May 25, as I mentioned in my earlier comments, this matter was presented to the city council to consider the options with respect to the proposed measure, and at that time, the council requested that the matter be continued to June 8. That was actually based on my recommendation to allow some additional time for research to be done in connection with a letter which had been submitted on behalf of one of the property owners that I'll get to in a moment. So that's our chronology. In my earlier comments, I mentioned the title that was prepared in connection with this measure. The title is here on the screen, and it is an initiative ordinance that would be amending chapter 3.0 of the city's general plan. In addition to the title, there is also something that's called a summary, which is also part of the documentation that I prepared on this matter, and as you can see on the screen, this was a citizens, and still is, a citizens' initiative proposing to extend the date of the 1998 curb ordinance. I had mentioned that the current expiration date is December 31 of 2020, the proposed extension date is December 31 of 2050. All right, I had spoken earlier about the existing curb law and what it provides. This screen provides a statement of the existing law. Again, this was part of the summary that I had prepared, and it was submitted as part of the petition. As you can see, and as I've mentioned earlier, whoops, too quick, we had on November 3 of 1998, the voters adopted the original curb ordinance. Secondly, that that restricts growth within the city of Camarillo. Curb stands for Camarillo Urban Restriction Boundary. Thirdly, there's some exceptions to the curb ordinance with respect to roadways, water facilities, public schools, and the other. And the curb ordinance expires on December 31 of 2020 and can only be amended under certain conditions. So that's the existing law. The proposed changes under the measure as it's been presented— The proposed changes under the measure as it's been presented, I couldn't fit all seven on one slide, so I've divided it. Here's the first four changes. I'm not going to read them all, because they're up on the screen for you there. I'll just kind of summarize them here. It does establish, number one, an area that's called the Cano Creek Voter Participation Area. You will see a map that's one of the exhibits to the petition in a few minutes that will illustrate the location for that voter participation area. Secondly, it's going to require the changes to the general plan within that area, such as housing be approved at an election or by the city council under certain procedures. It imposes some additional notice requirements. It revised the existing exemptions for permitted development, and actually, they're a little broader now than the previous ones, but essentially, very similar limit exemptions, roadways, water and sewer facilities, public schools, and the like. So those are the first four changes. Changes five, six, and seven are here. It extends the expiration date, as I mentioned, to December 31 of 2050. Number six, it exempts projects where there's been a vested right. And finally, number seven, it would take precedence over any amendment that would be adopted between now and the submittal date. So that's the summary of the proposed changes in the current measure. I mentioned to you that there are certain exhibits to that petition. I'm going to spend a moment now and go through those with you. This is Exhibit A to the petition. It is the Camarillo Urban Restriction Boundary General Plan Map, Curb for short. And if you look in the lower-left corner of the screen, there's a legend here, and the dotted red lines show the area that is the current Camarillo Curb Boundary. Then, the solid black below that is the city's limit boundary. And then the final outline here are parcels. So, going to the map itself, the dotted red line, as you can see here, does extend beyond the city limits in some areas, like right where I'm pointing here. So it is, my point being in this area here as well, my point here is that the Curb Line and the city limit lines are not identical. All of the city is within the Curb Boundaries, but there are some properties that are within the Curb Boundaries that are outside the city limits. So, that's the Exhibit A, the Curb Boundary General Plan Map. Now, this is Exhibit B. Remember, I mentioned earlier about the voter participation area? The slashed yellow, as you can see in the legend on the lower-right corner, designates the voter participation area. To orient you to the map, this is the 101 freeway, Cano Grade, coming down to the 101 freeway. We've got Pleasant Valley Road here, Poncho Road. There's an industrial area here in the middle that is not part of the voter participation area. So the voter participation area is, as you can see here, goes over to the area to the west and down. So that is the voter participation area. This is Exhibit C to the petition, and this is a copy of the city's general plan map. As you can see, the city's general plan provides a legend on the right. It's color-coded to particular uses within the general plan area. It does include properties that are outside of the city's limits for planning purposes, which is consistent with the applicable law. What I'm showing you now is the voter participation area. What this diagram or the map shows that is a little bit different than one you saw before, is it's got the parcel lines. So the red lines here are parcel lines, meaning that it's a particular piece of property, and the red line outlines that parcel. So, for example, this area here is a parcel. And these numbers that you see here, these are the Assessor Parcel Numbers that correspond to those parcels, sometimes referred to as an APN. Now, I mentioned up at the top that this is part of the voter participation area, the voter participation area, that would be part of Options 1 and 2. And a little later in my comments, I'll explain what Options 1 and 2 are. We did receive a letter on May 23 of 2016 from the Nielsen Law Firm on behalf of Caigus Land Company. I'm going back one slide now. Caigus Land owns this parcel here that I'm pointing to in the lower-left corner, the southwest corner of the voter participation area. They also own a parcel of land which is immediately to the north of that. I think it's about five acres, but whatever size it is, that's what it is. And then there's a little strip of land just to the north of that, that we've been doing some research on. We haven't yet identified whether that's in the city limits or not, because it's so close to the city limits. There's many title documents that we're looking at to determine whether that third piece of land is within the city limits or not. But we know for sure that the larger parcel here, which I believe is about 300 acres, and the smaller one to the north of that, about five acres, are outside the city limits. You'll understand in a moment the reason I went to that explanation. So now, we have the letter from the Nielsen Law Firm. They represent the Caigus Land Company that owns those parcels that I just mentioned. And they argue that the petition, as it's been submitted, is defective for four reasons. First, they say that there was a failure to publish the Notice of Intent and circulate it as legally required. Secondly, that the petition failed to include the full text of the initiative. Third, that there's false and misleading statements in the text of the initiative. And fourth, that the initiative and the petition failed to comply with other mandatory form and format requirements. So, I've been busy for the last couple of weeks reviewing all this information, and did a lot of research, and you're all going to hear about that now. First of all, on the argument with respect to the publication of the Notice of Intent to circulate, that's argument number one that they've presented. By way of background, as I mentioned in my earlier comments when I gave the chronology, on April 10th of 2016, that's when the proponents published their Notice of Intent to circulate the petition in the Ventura County Star. Now, I begin the discussion on the circulation issue with a citation to what lawyers often call a long-established law. When it's an older case, it's from 1920. But there are many cases since then, but this quote, I think, kind of captures the point here. And I'm going to actually read, read this, and I know that's, maybe it'd sound a little tedious, but I think it's important. So this is our California Supreme Court, the highest court in the state of California. And the name of the case is Application of Herman. This, 183 Cal, 153, that's where it appears in the official report. So what the Supreme Court said in this case is, I don't think I need to be pointing at it, you all know what I'm talking about. So by the term "a newspaper of general circulation," the legislature had in view publications to which the general public would resort in order to be informed of the news and intelligence of the day, editorial opinion, and advertisements, and thereby to render it probable that the notices or official advertising would be brought to the attention of the general public. So that's what the court described as the subject of newspapers of general circulation. So that's kind of a, an overarching point, and we'll see how that plays out as we go through these various issues. By the way, for those of you that haven't had the benefit of the Agenda Report, which is 200 and something pages long, the report itself is about 16 pages. The rest of it are attachments that establish the points that are made here in this PowerPoint and in the Agenda Report. So, there's eight points that I'm going to make, and I'm sorry, this is going to take a little bit of time, but I think it's important for everybody to understand that this is a very serious matter. It is one in which Caigus Land is making a contention, and I think that everybody needs to understand what the issues are that have been presented. So, in response to the issue, the first issue, their first argument about the newspaper of general circulation, and again, for those of you that want to read the Agenda Report and get more details, I don't want to spend the next three hours reading it to you, but I'll just summarize it for you here. Our first argument is that, our first response to their argument regarding the newspaper of general circulation is, and by the way, their contention is, that the Ventura County Star is not a adjudicated newspaper of general circulation in the, excuse me, in the city of Camarillo. So here's the, did I say that wrong?
No, you said it right.
They caught it, don't worry.
Okay. Well, sometimes I, between my brain and my mouth, it doesn't always work, but...
They're doing the same thing we did when we first heard it.
Hopefully, they did. Okay. All right, back to the details. So, the first, the first response we have with respect to that issue is, number one, is that the Elections Code 9205, when you read it, does not require that the newspaper be adjudicated as a newspaper of general circulation within the city of Camarillo. In fact, it merely says a newspaper of general circulation. I also point out in the Agenda Report that when the legislature intends for the newspaper to be adjudicated in a particular location, it will say so. And I gave examples of that. The Probate Code and other codes will specify where it needs to be adjudicated as a newspaper of general circulation. And this code section does not say it has to be adjudicated in the city of Camarillo. And by the way, the Ventura County Star has been adjudicated as a newspaper of general circulation for the county of Ventura, and that's the second point here, that the Star is an adjudicated newspaper for the county of Ventura as of June 23, 1952. And Camarillo was included, the Camarillo area, was included at that time as an unincorporated area of Ventura County. Most of you may know that the city was incorporated in October of 1964. So 12 years before the city was incorporated, the courts found that the Ventura County Star was a newspaper of general circulation for the county and for the area that it was the, not, the unincorporated area of Camarillo that later became incorporated. So here's another case, and being a lawyer, I'm sorry about, I apologize in advance, but the cases are important to be able to understand what the law is on this issue. So, here's a case a little bit later than the last one I gave to you. It's a 1964 case. It's Norwalk versus Call. And again, it's the California Supreme Court. And here's what they had to say with respect to this issue of the adjudication, that the purpose of limiting publications to newspapers meeting certain standards is to assure that the published material will come to the attention of a substantial number of people in the areas affected. Now, remember, that's basically what that Herman case said that I had quoted to you from recently. But the reason I've included the Call, Norwalk-Call case is additional language here, which is, and of course, and I've gone to the trouble of underlining it and emphasizing it and piling it, it said, "A newspaper meeting the standards does not forfeit its ability to serve that purpose merely because changes occur in the name or political structure of the area." So, the fact that the city of Camarillo was not a city in 1952, and later became a city, it's my view that that would be a change of political structure, and the court is here saying that the newspaper, in this case, the Ventura County Star, would not forfeit its ability to serve by the fact that the city later became incorporated. All right, so those are the first two responses on this issue. There's more to come. Number three, in 1936, the Star acquired the Ventura Free Press, which was founded in 1875. Now, the reason that's relevant is because the Ventura Free Press was a newspaper, from what we can tell, obviously, the records here are not as clear as they could be. And in fact, the requirement to be adjudicated as a newspaper of general circulation, I believe, did not occur until 1952. But the point is that the Star had acquired the Ventura Free Press in '36, and it had been founded in 1952. So that's the third point. Excuse me, 1875, thank you, Charlotte. Number four, December 1993, the Star acquires the Camarillo Daily News, which was founded in 1926. Now, there are some documents that have come in what we call a red folder. And what that means is, these are documents that we received after the Agenda was posted in, last Friday. And one of those documents that came in is an order, is entitled "A Decree Establishing the Camarillo Daily News as a Newspaper of General Circulation," and that was signed by the court on August 15 of 1975. So, for those of you that recall the Camarillo Daily News, it was here back in 1975, and operated as the Camarillo Daily News until December of 1993, when it was acquired by the Star. I've cited legal authority in the Agenda Report with respect to the legal effect of the acquisition of the Star, acquisition of the Camarillo Daily News by the Star, and that presumably, once the Star acquired the Daily News, it would have acquired whatever rights and assets that the Daily News had, including the adjudication as a newspaper of general circulation. Number five, talking about publications of notices. Now, before I get into some of the specifics on this one, let me mention that, as I did earlier, and I've now cited a couple of court cases, that talk about the importance of a newspaper of general circulation in terms of presenting the information to the public and making it probable that they're going to become aware of it. One of the points that's raised in the Nielsen letter is that there's a newspaper that has been adjudicated as a newspaper of general circulation for the city of Camarillo, and that is called the Tri-County Century. So, in the last two weeks, we've done some research trying to locate this newspaper, and, and, and to see to what extent it actually does publish any information that would be of interest to Camarillo residents. So, publication of notices. First, let's start with the Star. We know that seven of the 10 cities in Ventura County use the Star for their publications. Now, when the Star received its Order of Adjudication in 1952, what it says in the adjudication is that it has been adjudicated for the city of Ventura, excuse me, the county of Ventura, and the state of California. It does not mention the city of Thousand Oaks, the city of Simi Valley, the city of Camarillo, all of which were not incorporated as of 1952. So seven of the 10 cities, there's a few of the smaller cities that use some local newspapers. I think Santa Paula is one.
Ojai and Fillmore.
Ojai and Fillmore are the other two. But most of the others, well, all the other cities publish in the Ventura County Star. We know that the Ventura County Star is published daily. That would be seven days a week. And that there, from, we checked the, from May 27th to June 12th, for that period, and we found 32 public notices in the Star during that time. All right, so we also did some research with respect to the Century. And we found that there's one city that publishes in the Century, and that's the city of Port Juaniemi. And I should also add that Port Juaniemi sometimes publishes in the Star. We also found that the Century publishes once a week, which is on Fridays. And we did a comparison of the similar time period for public notices, and since they only published one day this week, which was May 27th, there was one. So, 32 public notices in the Star, one in the Century. All right, what about circulation? That's one of the indicia of whether or not a newspaper is one that's going to be widely read. Well, we know that the Star has rates for their subscriptions, that they're located in, in Camarillo, in most of the grocery stores, gas stations, convenience stores, and the cost is a dollar. What about the Century? Well, they, you can access them online for free. There's no charge for the newspaper. When you go to the news racks, it's one of those where you can just open it up and get it for free. And it's not located in, excuse me, in any of the grocery stores, gas stations, or convenience. So obviously, if we're looking to which newspaper is most likely, based on circulation, to be one that's going to be available on any kind of a basis that's going to be widespread in Camarillo, it would be the Star. All right, so that's number six. Number seven, information about Camarillo. Where do Camarillo residents, where are they going to look to find information about Camarillo? Well, we know that the Star has a website with a page dedicated to Camarillo. And how about the Century? Well, they have something they call a local page, which features public interest stories and information from different cities in the tri-county area. That would be Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, and San Luis Obispo County. Dedicated page versus local page. What else do we know? That in 2016, and the city clerk's office staff has done this research, checked the articles on the Star about Camarillo. So, we're now in June. Since January 2016, the Star has had 105 articles about Camarillo. The Century has had four. So, before I get to the conclusion, let me mention, there's another red folder item, which are articles on the Curb and SOAR, which has been, is this posted on our website now, the articles yet? Okay. This was another item that came in after the Agenda was posted on Friday. City clerk staff, again, did some research with respect to articles that appear on the Curb. on the Curb and the SOAR initiatives that have been the subject of, obviously, a lot of discussion over the last several months. And based upon that work, here's what we found. There were, from October of 2015 through present, there were 30 articles in the Star that discussed the Curb and the SOAR measures. I went through all those articles and all these tabs you see. 19 of those articles included a reference to either specifically to Camarillo or to multiple cities, including Camarillo. So, Camarillo was mentioned in 19 of those 30 articles. And so then, the next check was in the Century to see how many articles they had on the Curb and SOAR initiative since October of 2015, and the answer to that is none. All right, so what's the conclusion to be drawn on the point of newspaper of general circulation? The conclusion is, number one, is that the Star is a newspaper of general circulation for the city of Camarillo. I think it's pretty clear from the evidence that has been presented here that it's the newspaper that is used by Camarillo and its residents to obtain information, and that the Star has provided that information. We also know that the Star is not widely distributed in the city of Camarillo, has very few public notices, either by Camarillo or any other.
Century.
What did I say?
You mean Century, not Star.
All right. Fortunately, I have the counsel here to correct me when I'm wrong. They do that a lot. All right, so the Century is not widely distributed in the city of Camarillo, and that since the purpose of a newspaper of general circulation, as I mentioned now a few times, is so that it is one that is going to be read, to be informed of the news, and to render it probable that the notices will be brought to the attention, it's clear that the Star is the newspaper that accomplishes that purpose. I've addressed the adjudication issue as well in the earlier comments. So that's argument number one. The others aren't going to take quite as long. This second argument by the Nielsen firm with respect to the initiative as it's been presented is that they claim that the petition did not contain the full text of the initiative. And they have three arguments here. I'll go through them, and this is actually the only slide on this argument. So, I know it's a little wordy, but that's just an occupational hazard for me. So, number one is that Nielsen argues that Section 1 and 2 of the Curb Initiative are not included in the Curb measure. That's their first argument. So here's the response to that. When you look at the petition, it says in the first paragraph of the preamble, "Accordingly, the following is the measure adopted by the voters and inserted into the city's general plan at Chapter 3.0." So that's what the petition said it was, that it was adopted by the, and inserted into the city's general plan. So, and when you look at the city's general plan and how it was inserted, Sections 1 and 2 from the '98 Curb ordinance are not there. So, there was no misstatement with respect to what was being included, and the voters would not have been misled by this. Secondly, they argue.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
You say they're not there. It doesn't say Curb or SOAR. It has the wording, and they are included. It just doesn't have the terms. Is that what you meant?
No, here's what I meant. Thank you for asking that question. When you look at, and I should probably digress here for a moment. When you adopt an ordinance, often there are preliminary statements in it about the intent and such language, and I won't bore you with all the details. But when the ordinance itself, then the substantive terms of the ordinance are taken and they're put into the general plan, which is what happened here and what happens frequently, I mean, you could compare, for example, this code book that I'm about to hold up. All right, so this is like thick enough as it could be, right? Well, if all of our ordinances with all of their texts were in here, it'd probably be about that much bigger. So, when we adopt an ordinance, there's some preliminary language in it, but that isn't what ends up in the code. The substantive provisions end up in the code. So, the point that I'm making here is that it said that it was going to incorporate the provisions that were inserted into the general plan, and it did do that. So there wasn't any misleading or misrepresentation there, and that's my conclusion on that issue. All right, second argument. That's this one here. Nielsen argues that Exhibit A to the Curb measure is not the same as Exhibit A to the general plan, that Exhibit A to the general plan includes some additional information about the sphere of influence, areas of influence, and planning area. So let me go back. This is Exhibit A to the Curb, or to the current measure, and it includes the Curb boundary, it includes the city limits, and includes the parcels. It does not include the other information that was mentioned by the Nielsen firm. So let me get back to that slide. All right, so we're on point two. The responses that I have to this argument is, first of all, is that the Exhibit A to the measure, as I just illustrated it to you, is very detailed. It's more detailed than the one in the general plan area, and it also designates the parcels. And then the second point that I'd make is this. The fact that the Exhibit A to the measure didn't include the sphere of influence, the areas of influence, and the planning area, I do not believe that that, that they have made a showing that the voters could not intelligently evaluate the measure or that they would be confused by the measure. The measure clearly, sorry about all this. The measure clearly identifies, first of all, in Exhibit A, the Curb boundary, which is not changing, and it clearly identifies the voter participation area. So, voters were aware of what the information was that was necessary for them to make a decision in connection with this measure. The fact that it didn't have some other lines that go further beyond the cities, like here, for example, I'm showing you Exhibit C, that it didn't have some other dotted lines that were the influence, or that there might be some additional information that could have been included in the map, is that something that either misled the voters, prevented them from being able to evaluate the measure, or would cause confusion, and I don't think it would? All right, to pick up where we left off, the third argument is, they say that the severability and amendment or repeal sections are not stricken. And I'll have to try to think of a way to explain this that makes some sense for a change. A severability clause basically says that if there's a portion of an ordinance that is stricken out, let's say you have 10 provisions in the ordinance, and some court finds that one of the provisions is unconstitutional or illegal, that the remainder of the ordinance would remain in effect. So that's what a severability clause is. Amendment is as it implies. How do you amend it? And repeal, again, that's fairly understandable, that that would be, you would repeal the ordinance so it would have no effect. So, what the measure did do is say that those sections, well, first of all, the severability amendment or repeal sections, remember I explained earlier about how we were talking about what was in the general plan? Well, those aren't in the general plan, so the fact that they aren't referenced in the measure, to me, is irrelevant, and certainly doesn't create a defect that would warrant rejection. The measure does say that it is replacing the original in whole after all of those provisions. So after the repeal section, and after the amendment section, and after the severability section, it says, "Replacing the original in whole." So, I think that's pretty clear about what was intended there. And finally, as I mentioned before, there's been no showing, I believe, that the voters would not be able to intelligently evaluate this measure because of the severability amendment and repeal sections for the reasons I've just said, or that they would be confused. So that was the second argument. The third argument, this is one that, I'm debating whether I should go back to the slide of the map or not, but I'm not going to. I'll use my words. As you recall, there was the portion of the voter participation area in the lower-left corner, the southwest corner, that was outside the city limits, the land owned by the Cuyegus Land Company. And what they're saying is, as I understand it, is that you cannot include the Cuyegus land property that is outside the city limits with this measure. And my answer to that is that that's not true. You can plan for property that's outside of your city limits. So the first point being, that the measure itself says, in reference to subparagraph H, it clearly references the, and that slide doesn't really give a context, so if you'll bear with me for one moment, I'll find that. I didn't have room on the slide. Found it. It's Section H, it's on Page 3, and it's talking about within the Cuneo, I'll quote it, Section H, quote, "Within the Cuneo Creek voter participation area and in any and all applications for a zone change or project that require a public hearing, whether before an officer, board, commission, or council of the city." So, it's clear, in my opinion, that this measure applied to projects that were brought before the city. It says that. So, that's my first point, is that we are dealing with a measure that's dealing with projects that are being brought before the city. The fact that the property may be in the county now, we don't know that it's always going to be in the county. As long as it's in the county, clearly, the county has jurisdiction over it, and there's nothing in this measure that says otherwise. The second point that I make here, and I do this because the Nielsen letter raises it, is that this somehow is affected by LAFCO and that there's some interference by the measure with the LAFCO rules. Well, that's not true. There's nothing in the measure that interferes with LAFCO or that even suggests that it's trying to interfere with LAFCO's rules. Now, let me pause for a moment and explain that LAFCO is the Local Agency Formation Commission, and that if and when the Cuyegus land property, wherever to be, annexed to the city of Camarillo and possibly be subject to our process, it needs to go through what's called the LAFCO process, and they would review it to determine whether it could be annexed into the city of Camarillo. LAFCO does a lot of other things, and I don't want to minimize their role, but whatever it is they do, there's nothing in this measure that interferes with LAFCO's powers or jurisdiction. And the third point is that cities may include areas outside the city for planning purposes. I'll be with you in one minute. All right, I'm back. The Merritt versus City of Pleasanton case, which I've cited here from 2001, this is in the Agenda Report at the bottom of Page 7, and I do want to read just the last sentence from that case. I'm quoting it. "Until the city acquires the property, the city cannot zone it. Indeed, the whole purpose of pre-zoning is to designate the zoning that will occur upon annexation." So, based on the court cases, based on the fact that cities do plan beyond their city limits, the fact is that the city of Camarillo has planned beyond our city limits in our general plan. There's nothing that is illegal about that. There's nothing in the measure that would give rise to that being a defect in the petition to warrant its rejection. And I would also call attention to a Government Code Section 65859, which talks about pre-zoning of unincorporated territories. So the conclusion on this point being that there is no false or misleading statements in the measure. And now I'm on the fourth argument, and this is the last one. I don't know how many of you saw Johnny Carson, but we did a Karnak thing with the envelope, and it said, this is the last, okay. So, the initiative petition did comply, well, for those of you that weren't around for that, you don't understand that reference, but.
I think most of them were.
Well, they may be. I see some young faces. So, the fourth argument is that the initiative petition complied with all requirements. So what the Nielsen letter does is, at the end, they kind of throw in a few other arguments to suggest that there might be some issues with the petition. I've reviewed those, done the research, and I do not find that there's any of those arguments that would warrant the rejection of this petition as being defective. They first argue that, under the Elections Code Section 9203, that the petition language didn't include before the title and summary, where it says, "The city attorney has prepared the following title and summary, and then of the chief purpose of the points, end points, of the proposed measure." So they're saying, because these words, the chief purpose and points, weren't in the measure, that we should find that the measure is defective. Well, the answer to that is twofold. Number one is that the lack of that language, there's no evidence, in my view, to show that the voters could not intelligently evaluate this measure because of the lack of those, one, two, three, four, five, six words. And secondly, under the doctrine of substantial compliance, I think there's been substantial compliance. I'm going to tell you in a moment about that doctrine of substantial compliance. The second argument that's at the end of their letter is that Elections Code Section 9224 references what's called an enacting clause, and that the ordinance must include the language, "The people of the city of," and it would be Camarillo, "do ordain as follows." So those words right there. And they say that's not included in the petition. So here's our responses. First of all, that enacting clause is included in the proposed ordinance. It's in the Agenda packet, so the ordinance that would be presented to the voters would have the enacting clause. The second point I will make is that the lack of those words, there's no showing that the voters could not intelligently evaluate the petition nor be confused by the lack of those few words. And finally, under the doctrine of substantial compliance, I believe that there would be substantial compliance. All right, I've been previewing this one, so let's get to this doctrine of substantial compliance. Here's another California Supreme Court case. It's called Costa versus Superior Court, decided in 2006. And as boring as this is going to be, I'm going to read from this case now, because there's many statements within this quote that I think are relevant to the matter that's before the counsel this evening. So, it says, "At the same time as we shall see, the governing cases also have recognized that an unreasonably literal or inflexible application of constitutional or statutory requirements that fails to take into account the purpose underlying the particular requirement at issue would be inconsistent with the fundamental nature of the people's constitutionally enshrined initiative power," and I am going to underline that for emphasis, "and with a well-established judicial policy to apply a liberal construction to this power whenever it is challenged in order that the right be not improperly annulled. If doubts can reasonably be resolved in favor of the use of this reserved power, courts will preserve it." And then there's a citation to some cases. And the last case, they say, the Epperson case, emphasizing the fundamental concept that provisions relating to the initiative should be liberally construed to permit, if possible, exercise by electors of this important privilege. I also emphasize that. And there's more. The court, this is also from the Costa case. "Thus, when California courts have encountered relatively minor defects that the courts find could not have affected the integrity of the electoral process as a realistic and practical matter, past decisions generally have concluded that it would be inappropriate to preclude the electorate from voting on a measure on the basis of such a discrepancy or defect. In such cases, as long as the fundamental purposes underlying the applicable constitutional or statutory requirements have been fulfilled, the decisions have concluded that there has been substantial compliance," underline emphasis, "with the applicable constitutional or statutory provisions, and that the invalidation of a petition and preclusion of a vote on the measure is not warranted." So that is the doctrine of substantial compliance. And what that would mean is that you don't always have to turn square corners, that if the so-called defect is one, that you could say that there's still been substantial compliance with the purposes and intent of the statute, that that is sufficient. All right, now, this is, well, I need to get to Options 1, 2, and 3. Here, I'll come back to Option 4 in a minute. So, the Agenda Report has, as it's been presented, four options for consideration by the counsel. Option 1- Option one is to adopt the ordinance without alteration. Option two is to submit the ordinance as it's been presented without change to the voters. Option three is to order a report per the Elections Code 9212. And option four is submit the revised ordinance to the voters. So now I'm going to go back to this last slide. It is discussed in the Agenda Report with regards to a possible fourth option. This fourth option, I'm going to summarize it briefly here. This slide, as you can see, voter participation, option four, would modify the voter participation area by deleting the property that's located outside the city limits. That would be the Cuyegus Land parcel, ending with 0080 here. I can't read what those numbers are, but the one that I said was about five acres to the north of that. And then if there's that other sliver of parcel that's north of that, if that's outside the city limits as well, that would not be included in this revised voter participation map. So let me point you to the legend here. The revised ordinance with the voter participation area would be here. This one has the parcel lines that I told you about before, effective parcels, and the city boundary is in bold and black. So that is option four. And I told you before that there's four options. Or other action is deemed by the Council to be appropriate. Now, in addition to the red folder items that I've mentioned previously in my comments, the Council has also received, and it's been posted on the city's website, and it's in the category of what I call the red folder items, multiple emails from residents with respect to their desire that the Council consider the measure as it's been submitted. That meaning that, and I believe there's about 50, 50 or more emails.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty, oh, thank you. This is my assistant. So we have plus or minus 57 emails from residents who have all indicated their support for the measure as it's submitted, and nobody indicated support for measure number four, or option number four. Now, the reason option number four has been presented in the Agenda Packet as an option is that there were discussions that I had with the attorney for the proponents and the attorneys for Cuyegus Land to see if there was a way to resolve the issues that have been presented with respect to the challenges to the measure, as to whether or not it was legally defective or not. However, in order for option four, as a compromise, if you will, to be feasible, it would be necessary, in my opinion, that there be community support for it. And given the number of emails that have been received with respect to the community's desires to have the measure submitted unaltered, in my opinion, option four is not a feasible option. The -- I would suppose some of you sent those emails in. So I believe that, you know, you have a city council here that is certainly aware of the provisions here and sensitive to the desires of the community. We're also sensitive to the requirements of the law. And if this compromise is one that is not being supported by the community, it's certainly one that is not a compromise. In order to have a compromise, you need to have it supported by the necessary parties, and if the proponents of the measure and their supporters are not in favor, it's just not going to be a feasible measure. So it was presented as an option, but at this point, it doesn't appear to be one that's feasible. Let me talk about option three. Option three is one where the Council could order a report. We'll get to questions in a minute. This is Elections Code Section 9212, and one of the options that the Council has is to request a report where you ask about the fiscal impact, to check on internal consistency, the effect on land use, the impacts on funding, the community's ability to attract and retain business, the impact on vacant lands, the impact on agricultural lands, any other matters, and that it could be presented no later than 30 days. This is not an option that would appear to be a reasonable one, in my view, given the fact that there doesn't appear to be any questions with respect to what this measure provides. The report is intended, and I believe that this Elections Code section is intended, when the Council believes that that information is necessary for them to make a decision. Now, having said that, that's my view, and I'm not one of the voting members up here. So the Council certainly has a choice as to whether or not to request that report, so it was my obligation to present that as an option. But given the analysis that has been done here and based upon my review of the measure, it doesn't appear that there's a need for that report, but certainly would defer to the Council if they should make that choice. So now let me go back to questions. These will be questions from the Council, not from you all.
I have a question.
Questions? Yes, Charlotte?
Yes, you said one thing, and then you later said something about adopting it, not adopting it, but putting it on the ballot unchanged. And then you said the, what you were suggesting would contain the words, "the people do ordain," or something like that.
Yes.
How do you reconcile those two things, unchanged and adding those words?
Well, I would reconcile it by saying that the Elections Code says "do ordain," so it's my belief that we should put that into the ordinance. So technically, yes, we're adding language to it, but I believe we can do that because it doesn't change the text of the ordinance, because all it is is a so-called enacting clause, but the text of the ordinance, as it was presented to the public and as they reviewed it in the petition, is the same. It's just that we have that introductory sentence, if you will, where it says "do ordain." As a matter of fact, and I'm glad you asked this question, if you look at the Section 3.0 of the General Plan, which is where this would end up, it doesn't have the enacting clause in it or any of the other introductory paragraphs.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Kevin?
Yeah, just kind of quickly, Brian, on your eloquent nature going through this. But in your opinion, then, the questions that were brought up at the last minute, that we do have answers to them, and you're comfortable that, with your due diligence, that you've looked at a number of case law to be able to answer those in a reasonable and a timely manner?
Well, let me answer it this way. The answer is yes to your question, but I would add this, that, I mean, I'm the city attorney, I'm not a judge, and I cannot predict what would happen if there was a court challenge that would be filed to the measure as it's been presented. I did, to the best of my ability, do a review of the facts and of the applicable law, and my conclusions are that the defects that are referenced in the Nielsen letter are not a sufficient basis for the Council to find that this is a measure that should not be put on the ballot. But as I said, if there's a legal challenge filed, it is certainly possible that a court could view the law or the facts differently than I have, but I have done my best to come to the conclusions that I have with reviewing all the arguments, the documentation, and the applicable law. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Little?
These are one of the times where a city attorney earns his money.
One of the many times. You see what we get to hear in the back room from him?
So I thank you for that explanation. I hope it, the residents and voters and citizens in the audience understood, because it was well done. I think --
That's one for our attorney.
Really does he get applause?
That's right. But in any event, I just want to thank the city attorney for the presentation, and I think it answered a lot of questions. I hope it answered, it certainly did for me when I heard it, and I hope it did for the other people in the room. So with that, I guess we go into some public comments or something.
Wait, any other comments? Any other questions? Okay, we'll open the public hearing at this -- we'll take public comments at this time.
It's not a public hearing.
Tad Dougherty. Remember, Tad, take into consideration what the attorney just said, all of that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. First, marrying your own comments, I would like to really compliment the city attorney on his very thorough Agenda Report. What he summarized there was a lot of it, but the written 16-page report was in-depth, thorough, and really comprehensive, and I really appreciate that. At the risk of being slightly redundant, stripped down to its bare essentials, a local voter initiative is really a pretty simple process. Some members of the public would like to have a law put into the books, so they draw up an initiative measure. Then they circulate petitions within the city for eligible voters to sign to show that there is the necessary support for the initiative to go forward. Once those petitions are submitted, county elections officials verify that the measure has received the required number of signatures and that they are the signatures from registered voters from within that city. The officials certify that to the city. At that point, the initiative measure is presented to the city council for it to take a specified action as outlined in the state election code and which have been shown in your Agenda Report. And that is where we find ourselves tonight. We have done all that that I just mentioned. We have met all those criteria. Now, we are here to simply bear witness to the action that you will take as you are obligated to do under state election code laws. We urge you to go forward with option two and take this initiative and put it on the November ballot. And for us, the proponents, of which I'm one, option four is a nonstarter. We have not agreed to and will not stipulate to any changes in the initiative. Thank you.
Excuse me, Your Honor.
Yes, Ms. Craven?
Um, would, you said you wouldn't agree to any changes. Would you object to adding the words "the people do ordain"?
There's no problem with that. That is, just as Mr. Perick explained.
Exactly.
I'm just wanting to ask.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, thank you. I'm going to be brief and talk about some of the conclusions that were made in the last couple of weeks, actually. On page 10 of his report, Mr. Perick concludes, "Based upon our analysis of the Nielsen letter, we have concluded that the arguments raised by Nielsen do not warrant the rejection by the city of the petition for the proposed curb measure." The other conclusion was made two weeks ago by the mayor, where, when he said, "They're going to sue us anyway." I'd bet on it. And finally, I'll conclude with the fact that I too am a proponent of this, and I too will not stipulate to any amendment to the ordinance, except --
The one?
The one.
Which one did you want?
We, the people, do ordain and establish.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Next, Marge. Marge Lorraine. It seems like I've heard you guys talk before.
Good evening, city council members, Mr. Norman, and especially the city attorney. I will probably be redundant, but I worked on this this afternoon, so I'm going to read it. Anyhow, my name is Marge Lorraine, and I live in Leisure Village. I respectfully ask the Council to approve option two. When Save the Grade was organized seven years ago, that was our intention, to save that beautiful land for prosperity. When we began collecting signatures for our petition, twice, that was what our signers heard. The passion people felt for that land was overwhelming. People from other cities became testy and irate when they were told only Camarillo residents could sign. Two people from LA County asked me if they could sign. Those of us who collected petitions, who walked from house to house, an apartment, and sat in the library, and stood in the farmer's market, showed everyone the map and the land to be protected, we were hiding nothing. They knew and understood and concurred with what we were doing. For us to waver in supporting option two would be a betrayal of our values, but what would be worse, it would be a betrayal to all of those who believed in us. Please put option two on the ballot and give the citizens of Camarillo the opportunity to decide the future of this spectacular space. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor. Your Honor, let's explain why we don't have clapping after individual people. There might, we want to hear from everybody, and if there's somebody in here who has a differing opinion, they should not feel intimidated. So we ask people not to clap, and we ask people not to boo.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Sean Welch. I'm a partner at the law firm Nielsen Merximer. I specialize in initiative and election law. Tonight, I think it's important for the record to reflect that there's only one lawful option before this Council, in the City of Camarillo, and that is to reject the initiative petition because it plainly violates the California Elections Code. To be clear, options one through three, included in the Agenda material tonight, would violate well-established law. Now, I know you received some legal analysis in your Agenda packets and tonight from the city attorney, and unfortunately, I have two and a half minutes left. I can't go point by point, but I'm going to leave you with three important legal points. The first, what's been presented to you is simply not the way that initiative publication and posting requirements work, nor is it an accurate discussion of the law as pertaining to newspaper adjudications. Namely, there is a Court of Appeal case that is called Abara versus City of Carson. It's prominently cited and outlined in our letter of May 23. In that case, the Court of Appeal invalidated an initiative measure because the proponents published in a paper adjudicated for the county and failed to post in three public places. It's directly on point with the facts here, yet it's not even mentioned once in the legal analysis you received. It's a problem. Second, the analysis you receive concedes their full-text problems in the initiative petition, but claims that there's no proof or evidence of voter confusion. That's not the law. Again, your analysis is missing. There's cases, including Heber v. Bybee, also cited in our letter. Court of Appeal, California, has held repeatedly that there's a presumption of voter confusion when the full-text rule is violated. There's no proof necessary, there's no declarations, you don't go around asking voters what their opinions are, it's not the way it works. Third, it defies both the constitutions of the United States and California, as well as logic and reason, to think that a municipal initiative could ever lawfully impose voter approval requirements on property outside the city's jurisdiction. The right of initiative is constitutionally limited to legislative acts. Imposing an illusory, an ineffective voter approval requirement for uses of land outside the city is simply not one of them. It's not only the law, it's common sense, any judge in any court will understand that. Accordingly, I urge you to consider the matter for you tonight carefully and take the following actions. One, reject the legally defective initiative petition as required by law, and if you so desire, in line with option four, consider an alternative measure, a council measure that would extend the SOR timeline. And two, exclude property that is unlawfully outside the boundaries of the city that's currently in the present measure. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but my time has almost expired at four seconds.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Imstrom, Little.
You mentioned these text issues that you say, well, we've sort of, the city attorneys apparently just shrugged off, as far as you're saying that they really mean what they mean. Yet, at the time, your final conclusion was you would be satisfied with option four by excluding the property. You don't mention the other text measures. Are you talking about, well, you just keep them shrugged off, or what?
No, council member Little. The measure that you would place on the ballot would be a council-sponsored measure. It would have nothing to do with this initiative. You could draft it tonight or in the coming weeks, any way you wanted to. Completely separate process. The current measure, invalid -- The current measure, invalid, ineffective, if it's placed on the ballot, it's my view that a court's going to take it off. Alternatively, and nothing's going to be on the ballot for November. Alternatively, the council, if it so desires, could construct an alternative measure. The rules about the form and format requirements, all the legal defects, publication, the posting requirements, it all goes away because this becomes a council measure. Something would be on the ballot for November, but it would be consistent with the law.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Louise Roberts.[634.79][634.79](Laughter) Don't leave, it's just getting exciting, guys.[640.04][640.04](Laughter) Louise Roberts. Ah, there you are.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Louise Roberts, 2441 Blanchard Place. And as you can see, we're all here again. I'm the founder of Save Caneo Creek. Over the last nine years, hundreds of Camerio citizens have packed their chambers, time after time, to let you know how important our magnificent gateway into Camerio is. Most recently, over 6,000 voters signed the petition for the Camerio-SOR initiative, not once, but twice. We've worked too hard, too long, and come too far to watch it be torn apart now because a high-powered law firm hired by Caligas Land Company, a development company which has land in the VPA, has claimed that our initiative petition fails to comply with numerous mandatory requirements of the California Elections Code. We all know that a good law firm can pick apart any document, but please keep in mind the liberal construction of initiative power that Mr. Perick, on page two, states in his report. The California Supreme Court has said that the initiative power must be liberally construed to promote the democratic process. Indeed, it is our solemn duty to jealously guard the precious initiative power and to resolve any reasonable doubts in favor of its exercise. Well, they threw everything they could come up with against the wall, hoping that some of it would stick. I want to thank and commend the city attorney, Mr. Perick, and his staff, and Jeffrey Madeline and her staff, for the exhaustive work that they did in reviewing and researching the allegations brought up at the last minute, and finding that there was no merit to any of them. The SOAR initiative has been found to be sufficient, so according to the state election code, it must be placed on the ballot, unaltered. Conversely, there is no reason to place option four on the ballot because of threat of lawsuits. The people of Camerio have spoken loud and clear, time after time. We implore you, the elected representatives of the people, to protect the gateway into Camerio, in fact, all of Ventura County, the amazing vista that sets us apart from the San Fernando Valley and Orange County, keeps our identity, and defines our character. Don't let a lawsuit, the threat of which has so aptly been quelled by your staff, define what you decide tonight. Take note that even while Mr. Perick discusses option four, to remove the land from the VPA, he states, and I quote from page 10, "Based upon our analysis of the Nielsen letter, we have concluded that the arguments raised by Nielsen do not warrant the rejection by the city of the petition for the proposed SOR measure. It's in your hands. Please listen to the people of Camerio and to your staff. We implore you to select option two, place the unaltered initiative on the ballot, and discard option four. Thank you very much for your consideration."
I have a question.
Question.
Same question I asked Mr. Merrily's and the other gentleman. Would you object to those six words being added?
No, I would not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Brown. There's a famous name, Pat Brown. Live up to that, Pat.[824.43][824.43](Laughter)
Well, I won't govern you.
Yeah, wrong gender, but...
Hi, this is Pat Brown. I'm going to say it's with an E, so I'm not going to be a governor today. I am an RN, however, and I wanted to say hi and thank you for letting me speak out. And I want to tell you, my little OCD soul is, was wonderfully given lots of information by Mr. Perick. As an RN, I'm going to talk to you about informed consent. None of you ever wants to go into a hospital or any place and just have people just do things for you. And you like to be told what's going on, and you like to be able to give consent, every single one of you. Informed consent is my stock in trade, as far as an RN. I'm going to ask that you, as little councilmen, have even a more important job than physicians and attorneys on an individual basis because of what you do, that you will inform our population, allow them, you've given us informed consent, and then allowing us to choose. Thank you for that, and I ask that you keep option two with the six words on it, and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. John Dempsey.
Hi, my name's John Dempsey, 2159 Derby Street. I'm the CEO of two LLCs and one sole proprietorship in the city of Camerio, and I'm proud to say that 2016 is our best year ever. Part of the process in setting up any company in Camerio is that you need to file your fictitious business name, or FBN, form at the county office, and then publish your FBN notice, choosing from a list of adjudicated newspapers of general circulation. California Code 17924 states, and I quote, "The statement should be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the county where the principal place of business is located." With regard to SOAR, Election Code Section 9205 states, and I quote, "9205, a notice of intention and the title and summary of the proposed measure shall be published, or posted, or both, as follows. A, if there is a newspaper of general circulation, as described in Chapter 1, commencing with Section 6,000 of Division 7 of Title 1 of the Government Code, adjudicated as such, the notice, title, and summary shall be published therein at least once." In 1975, the Camerio Daily News was challenged by Caligas Land Company in Superior Court. On August 15, 1975, the court ruled that the Camerio Daily News is a newspaper of general circulation and and for the city of Camerio. In 1993, the Star acquired the Camerio Daily News and in turn became an adjudicated newspaper of general circulation for the city of Camerio. SOAR did publish their notice of intention in the adjudicated newspaper of general circulation, the same newspaper of general circulation identified in Superior Court order, the same newspaper of general circulation used to file an FBN in Camerio for my businesses. If there is going to be a problem with defining whether the Ventura County Star, which physically is located within the Camerio city limits and has the highest subscription rate of any Ventura-based newspaper in the county, is, for whatever reason, not an adjudicated newspaper circulation, then such a ruling will impact much more than SOAR. It will impact all businesses who will need to refile their FBNs. Now, that's just not going to happen. I ask the city council to carefully review the agenda report submitted by our city attorney, Brian Perick. As a SOAR rep, we acknowledge and agree with all eight points he writes about with regard to the Election Code Section 9205. We ask the city council to go with option two, to place the SOAR initiative on the ballot as is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Now, somebody I've known for a long time, but I thought, that must be your office, not your place in Ventura. Richard Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here again this evening. When we were here two weeks ago, and we put it off for two weeks so that Mr. Perick would have a chance to look through it, it sounded like two weeks was plenty of time. What it turns out, however, is that there was a holiday in the middle, the Memorial Day holiday, and then we also learned that he has to turn in his report pretty much a week early. So we had less than a week, really, to do this analysis. So it was an incredible job that he was able to pull all this together. I want to address three things tonight. The options, your staff, and the proponents. The options, option one, is to adopt the measure as it's been presented to you. It seems counterintuitive that we would prefer not, that you not do that. It would be easy. But as I explained to council member Little two weeks ago, this is a voter participation process, and we encourage the voter participation. So option two makes much more sense to us than have you just hand us something on a silver platter. It also is important that Camerio engage with the symbiosis. We've got a county measure that's going to go off at the same time. So it's important that all of this work together. The voters have a right to speak. With respect to option three, we know what SOAR is. There isn't really a lot of secret, it's been around for almost 20 years. And with respect to option four, I want to again thank Mr. Perick for taking the laboring oar at trying to work out some kind of compromise in case everything else fell apart. I know how much time I spent on this over the last two weeks, but I was only dealing with one part of it. Mr. Perick was dealing with not only me, but he was dealing with the Nielsen Merximer firm as well, and his own staff and his own research. I don't know whether he was, it's the only public employee that I know that I was able to speak to on the Memorial Day holiday. It really was incredible. So with respect to the options, we do commend you to go with number two. Staff, Ms. Madeline and her staff, I wasn't aware of that until I read the staff report, how much work they put in, not just Mr. Perick's office, but your staff took this on and ran with it. And then with the proponents, I have worked diligently with every city that's got a SOAR measure going, all the citizens and the county. This has been my baby with a board that I work with. Your citizens are unbelievable. They are the best, and I commend their recommendation to you.[1258.83][1258.83](Applause)
Thank you. That's okay. He does a good job every time, especially in the first SOAR. Remember our first SOAR?[1267.15][1267.15](Laughter) We have, yes.
I just want to say, I don't always agree with Mr. Francis, but when his comments about our citizens, I will agree with.
Yeah. Last speaker. Last speaker, Mr. Matt Lormer. You got to speak to this one too, huh, Matt? Go ahead.[1286.01][1286.01](Laughter)
They always saved the... Here I am. Let's see why we're here. If you work and you come down that grade and you spend 45 minutes, you know that it's getting crowded in Camerio. You're tired of all the building. There's been a lot approved by this city council, and they're tired of it. You guys are even thinking about building a convention center, bringing 500 or 1,000 more cars in this community. The community's had enough. They don't want it. They've basically put this initiative on the ballot because they want to control it. They're taking the control away from you, and they're taking control because they don't want Los Angeles here. Have you ever been to Los Angeles? You see what's going on. Crime, traffic, it's pretty bad. They don't want it over here. And by the way, crime is up 18%. Assaults are up 33% in Camerio. You can make all excuses and shake your heads, but something has happened in Camerio. So as we look at this, these people have had to take their time away from their lives, knocking on doors for several months, coming here, and now they have attorneys outside the town who want to disenfranchise them as voters in this city. Outrageous. These people have paid taxes, they live in this city, they don't want it, they've spoken up, and they've had enough. And so therefore, you should follow the people, because the people are the city. Now, you have option two. You should follow option two. And you know something? The voters have an option five. And you know what that option is? Recall the city council if they don't listen to the people in this city. Laugh and shake your heads, but this is a serious issue. They care, they've spent their time, months and days. You've heard them. A lot of these people are retired. You know something? I think it's great, they took the time to do this because they care. They've seen what LA County is, and they don't want it here. And you know, for the builders and developers, you know, they say they create jobs, they come from the valley, they're not in this area. And the people who are looking for homes, most of these homes that are being sold are not Camerio residents, okay? So if they want to look for more building, maybe they should look in LA County, because that's where they belong. The people here have spoken loudly and clearly tonight. They don't want that stretch of land coming down the highway with homes on it. So hopefully, you will listen to the people tonight. Thank you.
Other questions and comments? No, good. Well, we have no more comment cards. Do now, we take any kind of questions? Questions?
Comment, I think.
Comments? No questions, comments. We've been through this long presentation, our attorney's good back there, too, and so we like it. But Charlotte?
Yeah. I went through all of the emails that were sent, and there were 45 of them, and then there were 12 more of the yellow cards, which are comment cards. I didn't add up the people who spoke, I don't remember how many. But there was a total of 57, and then, oh, 50, with the 12 that came in just before City Hall closed today, there were 57, and then seven more yellow comment cards, bringing it up to 64. Of those 64, uh, 20, 30, 43 wanted us to put it on number two, and the people who had been part of the organization have all said it doesn't matter to them, it's fine if we add the six words, "the people do ordain" and whatever, that the attorney said. I'm not sure how that's going to work, but at any rate, we, out of all of them, we had two people who wanted, didn't want it put on. There was one out-of-towner, I didn't really count that in my totals, and there was one person who submitted two. So it seems to me, of the people who chose to participate, there were 4,867 who signed. There are 37 who would like us to put it on as number two, and there are another 10 who wanted us to do number one or two. So it seems to me that it's a pretty simple thing. The people who want this to go before the, who want it, want it to go before the voters, and I think that's what we need to do, is put this before the voters.
Jen, Jen?
First, I want to take the opportunity to thank our staff for their hard work. We don't often, in fact, I don't remember the city attorney ever getting that much applause.
Now you can clap.
This is his night, yeah. Yeah, give him an applause.[1583.71][1583.71](Applause) In fact, I remember there's been some boos, probably from some of the same people out here, but that's okay tonight, you love him. But anyway, I do, I wanted to thank you and all of the staff who worked so hard on this, because it was, you know, two weeks ago, we put off this decision to just make sure that we had covered all our bases that we could do. So I thank them all for that. Personally, I believe that the citizens of Camerio deserve the right to decide this. It needs to be put to the voters. I applaud all of you who have worked so hard to bring this forward. It really is, when you get something that you believe in and you work so hard for it, it really says a lot about our community, and we thank you for participating. And now it's time to let the rest of the community, the rest of the voters, have their say. So I certainly can support sending this on to the voters in November.
Bill?
I think I made some, my comments already, but I'm prepared to support the placing of it on the ballot, or referring to the ballot for voter, to the voters of the city to consider...
Kevin?
Yeah, it may not have been popular with everybody in the audience at our last meeting, but I do think it's important to do as much due diligence and make things as strong as you can here, and answer, you know, questions that have been asked of us here to the best of our ability. And I do commend the staff and Mr. Perick, Mr. Francis for, was it, you worked on Memorial Day, too? Did I hear that right? But I do think it's important to really take your time and do this to the best of our abilities here, so I too support that we move forward with option two and let the voters decide on this.
After listening to Matt, I've got to do a little history for just a second, so everybody knows what's really gone on in this town, and Richard Francis will know that I worked as co-chairman of SOAR for this community in 1998, and we passed it overwhelmingly, 70-something percent, and they spent $140,000. Anyway, we beat them, and we passed SOAR. You know, Caneo Creek is brought up, and all the development we've got going on here was brought up by Mr. Matt. This Caneo Creek has lost three times. Every time they come before us over the past 20 years, it's lost. But the council can't say anything till you've had a public hearing. If you say something that can challenge your vote, you might not be able to vote. So we have to shut up and take all the arrows and things and calling us developers and everything else in the world, then it loses. And so we've upheld the people's cry. SOAR, when mistakes were found and it was disqualified, I offered, this is what's strange, I offered, hey, I'll bring it back, we'll put it on. And they said, no, we want to do it ourselves and, you know, go the hard way again. So we made the offer, city did, through me, anyway. But you guys did it the hard way, and I think you were successful. The issue we're facing tonight, it's not an issue, we're going to put this thing on the ballot, I already hear a couple of them saying that already, so I think that we've got this part of it gone. But when you talk about all the development we have going on in Camerio, when we became, when we passed the growth control in 1983, that says we're going to limit it to 400 units a year, well, you know how many, you know how many we were growing at that time? Three... 3,000 new units a year were being built back in 1980. 3,000. Everybody'd cry blues if we had 3,000 going out there right now. Well, myself and a couple of others got, put initiative together and we won. Cut it down to 400. Attorney told us if we go below that, we could lose and stay court, in court for not taking our fair share. Thousand Oaks did the same thing. We were both the same size, but they had loopholes in theirs. Now we're 67,000, they're 110. So who's grown fast? Us or them? It was them. We've done orderly growth that's helped us maintain our, maintain our capital improvement projects here in town, bridges and other things. It's given us time to catch up, take a breather. But if you went too low, you would be, we could lose in court for not taking our fair share. So we've taken the responsible lead, this council has. Four years, there's only 40 or 60 houses built only from like 2009, 10, 11. There were very few houses built. Economy got better. The ones that were zoned already began building. Everybody said, ah, we're building everywhere. Well, not really. The city's almost finished. It's almost done. So the scream and moan about the growth rate we're doing, I don't think is correct. And we've done our, we've done our, our responsibilities this board has. And we also, like you saw this evening, we had to okay things like senior housing, low income housing, regular, we had to okay a mixed, a mixed variety of units in the city by law. And so we're trying to do that. Same time, we're putting up berms and things, make sure it's better, it benefits everyone. And so tonight, we've got this back for you again, us again. And I guarantee you, I'm going to vote for it to be number two.
Your honor, I'll make a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution submitting the ordinance to the voters at the November 8th, 2016 general election and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the measure. And I'm going to include that we are going to let, have you add those six words.
I'll second the motion.
I should mention that they're already included in the ordinance that's in your packet.
Yes.
Okay. I just had to make it perfectly clear.
Kevin, you got a second? Okay. We have motion of second. Any other comments? Please vote. That motion passes five to zero. We're going to take a five-minute break. Questioning break, break, five-minute break.
Okay.
That's well done, Mike. You did, you did a nice job on summarizing. No, you did a very nice job. Very nice.
Mr. City Manager, do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Our interim finance director, Ms. DuChing, has an announcement.
Ah.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members.
Close your mouth a bit. There you go.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I am pleased to announce that the city has received the CAFR award for fiscal year 1415. So the CFOA, which stands for the Government Finance Officers Association, has a program where you can submit your CAFR, which is the comprehensive annual financial report that is audited by the independent auditors on an annual basis, to submit to this program for their consideration for an award that has a set of guidelines and standards that you would have to meet in order to receive this award. It's a national organization in the United States as well as in Canada and many cities in the nation apply for this award. And I'm, I'm pleased to announce that the city of Camarillo has received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for June 30, 2015. And while I am showing you this award, the credit really all goes to Ronnie Campbell, the former finance director, as well as his staff, former and present.
Very good. Very good.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
28 years in a row.
Applaud. Mr. City Manager, anything else? Mr. City Attorney, you've talked a lot tonight, but I'll ask you anyway. You have something else?
No more. I've only got about a half an hour of comments. No, I have no more comments. I've said enough.
Charlotte, start with you.
Hey, I attended an RDP 20, sorry. I attended an RDP 21 meeting yesterday morning where the commanding officer of the Air Guard 146th Wing made a presentation. Very interesting. Their MAFS firefighting capability is up and running and they just finished the, the training, required training. They're hoping to get two more planes. If you remember, we got them two more planes, but the Air Force took them. And so they're, they're hoping to get two more planes. And I'm not sure if that was a wish list being presented to us or, or what. But at any rate, if they got two more planes, they would add those two planes to the firefighting capability. And I attended the California Water Summit last week, was gone three days. It was a very interesting meeting. It was very different. I learned more than I think I've ever learned at any other meeting, about a variety of topics, but I was one of only two elected officials registered for the whole time. There were four mayors who came in and talked at a panel discussion and then they, their staff ushered them in and then ushered them out. And all the rest of the people there were, were vendors. There were about four people who were staff members at special districts, water districts, some of those that are looking to form a, what's the new name? A STOMP, I want to call it? No, the, what's the term I'm looking for? The Sustainability Management Plan, whatever that is. And such as Fox Canyon is. And, a GSA, there you go. And so they, they stayed the whole time. And so because I'm on the Fox Canyon Board, I was, shall we say, highly courted by all the vendors. I felt like a freshman college girl at a fraternity party. And then I met up with Dave on the way home and gave him the card of the guy who puzzled me the most because he approached me, he didn't, he didn't speak, but he wants to buy our stormwater system. So I asked the city manager to get ahold of him and find out why on earth anybody would want to buy our stormwater system and what he's going to do with it after he buys it. So anyway, enough of that, but I, I did learn quite a bit and I'm getting stuff out to various staff members as I, as I get through everything. I came home and had to start reading my packet and I had some other, you know, the budget session, a few other things to do. So I'll be getting some more cards to people. I was happy to read in one paper that was on my inbox when I got home that the triple flip is over. I hadn't realized that.
You what?
The triple flip is gone.
How do you guys understand triple flip? What that was all about?
You don't ask.
They all know what the triple flip was.
Yeah, that was amazing.
But anyway, it's, it's done for and I, I hadn't realized that. I want to say that I think the water division, the street division and the sandy division did a tremendous job on our Neo Road. They got it all together, they cleaned it up and they, they attacked it and for all but a short time, they had one way of traffic getting through and thanks to the shopping center, traffic always could get through. They could just go in and come right back out on Fiesta Street and be on their way. And so I, I went down and watched the action a couple of times and I thought they were doing a great job. We responded to that very well. I want to again point out that our flag is up for the time between Memorial Day and the Fourth of July. And this particular flag, it was given to us by the family of former council member Bob Pena. And the only other thing I have is I was wondering if there is any more word on what might happen in the future at the location where Albertson's and Hagen was. Because it's more than a month.
Yes. So we are aware from the property owner that there are tenants that are going in, but they still have yet to disclose the tenants. They did disclose that it may include relocation of Rite Aid within the center to an alternative location.
That's what they told me when I called them and said, they need a smaller location. Rite Aid does, believe it or not. And so I'll let you odds is that old exercise place over in the corner.
What does that have to do with the grocery store?
That Rite Aid may be taking a portion of the grocery store.
Well, that means we're not getting a big grocery store then.
Right. But we don't know what the tenants are.
And then they still have two large empty.
I heard council member Little, we did have an Aldi's open in the city of Simi Valley. So I don't know that they've announced any other locations in the county.
They don't have the same sized stores that most, I mean, they're.
No, they're smaller.
Who's that? Who doesn't?
Aldi.
But Aldi is operated apparently in coordination with Trader Joe's, so they're supposed to be a pretty good company.
You know, the owner of this shopping center also owns the shopping center by Vons. And one more. Oh, down by, down by McDonald's across from the high school. He owns that center, he owns Vons and he owns that.
Donahue Schreiber is the management. They actually do a very good job.
Tom Schreiber.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Jen?
Meeting wise, we did have a meeting of the Economic Development Committee, which meets, of course, with the chamber. And our staff again presents very well there. It was before Memorial Day weekend, so a lot of you regulars were missing. So we had, I told them they were the A team, not the B team. I too want to compliment staff and, and all the departments that had to work together on our sinkhole. I think that's the first big sinkhole that I've got to experience since I've been on the council. So I could now put that on the list of things that we have now dealt with and you all rose to the occasion very well. So good job. And you all worked together. You didn't point fingers and you got it done. The other meeting, of course, was our budget session and I thank you all for all the work on that. And of course, we all say we have a balanced budget, but you have to have a balanced budget. It's really no, it's how you balance it, right?
When somebody says I balanced our budget, yeah, you have to.
That's kind of a law, but, but it's how you get there. So the only thing is, I would like to talk about pavement management. Oh, he's not listening to me. You didn't get my joke. I said, I would like to talk about pavement management.
That's why we were talking.
Oh. No, but good job with, for everybody. It's, I know it's a lot of work to get the budget together and to get it through us. So I, I do appreciate all your hard work.
Bill?
Well, I went to the VCTC meeting last Friday and they adopted a budget. It was balanced, but you know, pretty much they're gearing up for the, they assume that they're going to get the necessary votes out of the various city councils to put it on the ballot. And now, as I understand it, there's some organizing by private interest to start developing the campaign staff and strategies for the campaign. And so, and that's just about what's going on right now. Budget study session, I commend the staff for the budget. It was well done and I appreciate the information. I asked a couple of questions and by the first workday after the budget, I got the answers. So that's quicker than I ever gave them. And finally, today, Mike Morgan and I attended a session over at the PB Hospital. They're, they're raising the steel on the new building and we watched them.
One big I-beam.
Put one big I-beam in there. I'll tell you, those things are huge and.
If you've ever seen a big guy with a, this big I-beam is heavier than heck. Bring it up and there's two guys up there that, I don't know how they walk like that on those I-beams. And they've gotten, got them into place and everything was great.
They had a crane though, didn't they?
They bring the crane, bring it up, but they put it in and it has to drop into a slot and then be lined up with, with bolts.
Hydraulic jack they had to use to give them.
Had to get, had, but this building is designed to basically flex about eight different ways in the event of an earthquake. Both north, south, east and west.
We learned that stuff.
As well as up and down, high and low. So very, very interesting.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, I have a friend that's got a, rents a space over at the Albertson Shopping Center. And he said that the ownership is absolutely horrible. They're disgusting and despicable. Those were his words. We've been waiting for a new grocery store for a long, long time. I've been in retail for 30 years. We've had a business in 60 years. I've never heard of such a thing to be so secretive about what grocery store is going to go in there. My recommendation, if we don't find one there, let's find one someplace else. I think we need to write them a letter and we need to really get on top of this and see if there's anything we can do that. I don't like to hear that a small tenant is being treated like dirt. I think that's terrible in our city. And if there's anything that we can do, I think we need to get right on it and do it. I'm tired of waiting for them. That's just my opinion. Also Frontier, what's that?
I'll join you.
Yeah. Also Frontier Communications, have we heard anything since the gentleman came and said that they're going to fix their problems? Have we got any input about any less calls or more calls or does anybody have any information on that?
I think it's kind of died down.
Yeah, we don't have statistics on how many calls this last week versus the week before, for example, that I can share tonight, but we can get that to you tomorrow. But in general, yes, the number of calls have subsided. Now, of course, even during normal operations, when everything's settled out, there will still be issues from time to time. And so there will never be a situation where there are no calls, but it seems like it's finally subsided to a level that's probably more typical.
What's funny, Kevin, remember he was here and I said, mine won't even tell you what's on the channels over here? Within a day, boom, it all came on. That was weird.
Does anybody know there was some talk that they were going to let you out of your two-year commitment or anything because of all this? Did anything ever become of that or?
I don't know.
You haven't? I had with Verizon and there was some talk about, because of the problems we had, that they let them out of that two-year commitment so at least they could see if there's some other options out there. Maybe nothing became of it. Yeah, I guess nothing became of it. Okay. I think that's it tonight.
Well, during all this hullabaloo about running for election, we, Kevin, I've been quite busy. I know he has because I've seen him. I had a whole lot of other things to do too. We had the Canal Mountain Celebration Memorial Day and I had a speech there. I thought I did a pretty good job.
You did a nice job.
Talking about the event, not what I did in Congress and what I'm going to do for you now and so on and so forth, but talking about the day and what it means. And I think with the, the people that I had researched, Kennedy and some others and some sayings they had, I think it was pretty appropriate. We had a Cameron House Foundation meeting. We had a hospice memorial that was over at the Camarillo House. I went because I owe the hospice a lot. My mom was under their care for a long time and we had to put stars on the blanket and all that stuff. Habbad, I was guest speaker, the guest speaker at the Habbad meeting was, was from Israel and he's a leader over in Israel. And he was very, very entertaining and interesting on history, about what's going on over there. Rabbi Lang invited me. Then there was a retirement at Leisure Village. Got a call and there's a gentleman named Roy there I've known for a long time. He's been a Leisure Village resident, but he also is a maintenance person there in the, in the, the big house, you know, the, the community hall. And they had a big party for him and that was so fun because we had probably 150 people, but they, I mean, he, he got wooed and whatever, but the ladies singing to him and all kinds of things. He's moving to Santa Barbara to be closer to his kids. They wanted to come up there. They had retirement of Rand Michaels and Bill was with me at the Camarillo House. Instead of me making the presentation, I asked Bill to come up with me. So we both got to talk. So I shared a little room with him. He did a good job.
Well, thank you, man.
And so we, there is a lot of people there at that, at that event. That were there to, from all the school areas, administration going on. Now, we saw, I told, we told you about St. John's today at the, the big thing. Sometime you felt like that thing was going to come over on you. We kind of moved, moved back more, even though it wasn't that close. They also showed us the drawings of their buildings. And the one building you've got to wonder about is when you first enter into the hospital, that big building doesn't meet earthquake standards for a hospital, for people inside, that big building, doesn't meet earthquake standards for a hospital, for people inside, you know, for patients. So they're trying to dream up other things it can do in that building, like storage and like labs and things of that nature, but they run into a problem. That comes before him. It's called parking, because all the parking they've got is for the other big building. But if you look around behind, that whole area back there, nobody parks there, and it's legal to park all around that curb in the back. It's just a little bit further to walk. So they're looking at a lot of things to come back at us with and show us, and when they get ready, show us what they've got in their minds. Huh? I know you will.
Make sure they have enough parking, because it's always been short.
Well, they have no more parking on the site than what they've got now.
They had to park two blocks away to attend the meeting, three blocks away.
Yeah, I know, they are using up other people's parking.
Anyway, the curb parking, the curb parking all the way around the back, all the way around is open, never used. And, but.
Why didn't Bill use it?
He didn't, I told Bill, I, when I came down that side, there was whole tons of cars parked over, you didn't, I took a picture of it to show you.
The reason I didn't is because it's so difficult to figure out how you get in the hospital from the back.
Okay.
There's really no good entrance.
Anyway, that, that's a problem you'll be facing when it come back later. But they got to finish this first and some other things first, and beautiful building it's going to be. By the way, it's going to be seventy-eight feet, seventy-eight feet tall or ninety-eight feet tall. It's over three stories, it's got a cap on top. So it's a pretty good-sized building. Okay, that's all I've got.
You got to open the other council?
Now?
It's a special meeting.
Oh, God. Okay, we're going to open our special meeting, council meeting this evening, and we'll adjourn.
You asked for public comments first.
I mean, closed session, excuse me, I'm sorry.
But you need to ask.
We will recess to closed session.
You need to ask for public comments. It's your first item on the agenda. Well, I understand, but.
Is there anybody out here? Okay.
Okay.
Public comments, none? Closed public hearing.
Thank you. And now it's a closed session is the other, only other item on the agenda, and did you want me to announce that?
Yes.
All right. This would be a conference with real property negotiator, the authority is Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six point eight. We're talking about the former library at thirty-one hundred Ponderosa. The agency negotiator negotiating parties are in the agenda. Under negotiation are price and terms of payment.
Now.
Counsel, we're going to go to a study session first, and then we'll have our two closed sessions later on this evening, or tomorrow morning.
So we'll be, we'll be recessed to here, but we'll be closed when we get through our public hearing, I mean, our closed session and study session.